Hi, Mary Ann.
Am I muted? There you go.
No.
Did you have a nice party today?
We did. The rest of the day's been absolute chaos, but...
Oh, no.
The meeting is now being recorded and we are going live on Facebook momentarily.
John, I did put up a flag for the meeting in the background here.
I was about to say, Mr. Wilson, that does not look like the council chambers.
No, I'm at home.
Very good.
I stayed at home in case I went to sleep.
Oh, don't say that. Josh, I don't see, I'm working on my view here. I don't see all the members. Okay, I see Mr. Hibbler and Mr. Stroud and Mr. Love and Johnny Wilson. Are our other members present yet? I don't see them online.
CJ was there a minute ago.
Matt Harris just emailed me. I resent his link. And James will be joining us momentarily. We are still not live on Facebook.
All right.
We are live on Facebook.
Let me give it just a, just a moment longer. Mr. Harris is trying to log on and...
Josh, will Dr. Organe be here tonight?
Yes. He is. He is here on my screen. He's two below you. It's like the Brady Bunch.
Well, let me go ahead and get the, we can go ahead and get some of the items, preliminary items out of the way while Mr. Harris logs on. I think he's working on it at the moment. Having a little bit of difficulty. I will go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Gallatin Planning Commission for January 25th. Let me read a short message. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Orders Number 16, Number 34, Number 51, Number 60, Number 65, and Number 71 regarding public meetings and social distancing and the need to limit the community's spread of COVID-19. Members of the Planning Commission may participate by electronic means and the meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the members and citizens of Gallatin. We'll start with a roll call and please respond to the roll call by saying present and approve if you approve of holding the meeting by electronic means. Mary Ann, will you please take a roll call?
Chair Perrier.
Present and approve.
Vice Chair Harris. Mr. Wilson.
Present and approved.
Councilwoman Love.
Here and approved.
Dr. Organe.
Present and approved.
Mr. Stroud.
Present and approved.
Ms. Hibbler.
Present and approved.
Mr. Harris. Okay, it's six zero.
Okay. Albert, will you lead us in an invocation?
Certainly. Let us bow. Father, again, we bow before your presence, asking and thanking you for the blessings upon us. Now, as we come to work on the betterment for our city, we ask the master to keep us in your care. We ask that you bless our community in a mighty way. Continue to watch over us, lead and guide us, and allow us to do the things for the betterment of the community. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to serve. Continue to watch over us and keep us. It's our prayer. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
And Mr. Wilson, you have the flag with you. Will you please lead the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice, fraud...
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Secretary, do you have prior minutes to submit for approval?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got minutes stated November 16th, December 14th. I move we approve.
I have them for approval in a second. My Mr. Stroud, does anyone have any questions or any changes or comments to those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, will you please take a roll call vote. All in favor of approval of the prior minutes indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Love.
Aye.
Dr. Organe.
Aye.
Mr. Stroud.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
This is six zero.
All right. Before we get underway, Josh, I've received a text back from Mr. Harris. He said, no, he's not able to join by that link. He's trying to join via the public access and maybe you can add him from there. Is that possible or not?
It is. I see him now and I will promote him to panelist.
Great. Okay, thank you. Before we begin, let me just say that tonight has the potential to be a rather long meeting. We have a lot of items on the agenda. And it includes, eight of the items include public comment. So we may need to take a break about halfway through. But for those in the audience that are listening and may not have the agenda printed in front of them, I think it's only fair of an agenda of this length to kind of give you a heads up to where you are on the agenda. So very, very quickly, I'm going to read through the items so that you know where your item might fall on the agenda. We will have seven items on the consent agenda. I'm going to go through these really fast. It's surety renewals and extensions is the first item. The second item is Foxland Phase Six, Section One. The third item is Foxland Phase Six, Section Two, accepting some public improvements. Number, item number four is Double Dogs Restaurant. It's a drive-through. Number five is the Sonora County Courthouse Parking Garage, a final plat. Number six is Windsong Phase Two A, a final plat. And item seven is Windsong Phase Two B, a final plat. All of those seven items are on the consent agenda, which are items that are not controversial, will approve them with one motion unless somebody wishes to pull an item off the consent agenda. Item number eight is the Bowles Farm Annexation and Plan of Service. Item number nine is the Bowles Farm Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Item number 10 is the Bowles Farm Rezoning with Preliminary Master Development Plan. Item number, those three will be treated as three separate items and come with three separate public comments. So if you have a comment you wish to make, make it in regards to the item that we're talking about, whether it's annexation or the rezoning. I'll cover those again. And then item number 11 is the Woods Crossing Annexation and Plan of Service. Number 12 is also the Woods Crossing Rezoning with Preliminary Master Development Plan. Number 13 is Twin Eagles Phase 15 Annexation and Plan of Service. Number 14 is the Twin Eagles Phase 15 Rezoning with Preliminary Master Development Plan. Items number, I may have said that wrong. That was 14. Items number 15, 16, and 17 have all been deferred at the request of the applicant. Just in case you were here to talk about one of those, that's the Magnolia Street Duplex Phase 102, the Randolph Circle Duplex Phase 103, and the Randolph Street Duplex Phase 104. All of those have been deferred at the request of the applicant. Number 18 is 624 Davis Drive. It's a minor subdivision plat. And number 19, our last item, no, not our last item. Number 19 is the, called the Goat Farm. It's rezoning with Preliminary Master Development Plan. Number 20 is Tennessee Grasslands, amended preliminary master development plan. Number 21 is the Tompkins Farm Phase 1B, a final master development plan. And number 22 is the Tompkins Farm Phase Two, a final master development plan. I just went through that list so that people can know where they are on the list if you don't have a printed agenda in front of you. So with that, I will ask, oh, we have business to attend to, election of officers before we can move into the meeting. So Josh, I'm sorry, do we want to handle that now or can we handle that at the end of the meeting under other business so that the public doesn't wait?
The choice is yours, Mr. Chairman. We can happily move that to the end of the agenda if the Planning Commission wants to keep the current chair and vice chair the same. Or I'm sorry, oh gosh, yes, we can move that to the end of the item. Your term of election doesn't expire until the end of the month.
Is Mr. Harris on the, on the call yet? I don't see him on the screen.
I'm here, John.
Oh, great. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and knock it out and I'm afraid that by the end of this meeting, y'all will fire me. So we'll do, yeah. So we have, we'll take nominations for chairman.
I move we nominate John Preer for chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other nominations? Okay. I don't know if I need individual votes or if we can vote on a slate of officers once we have that. Let me do the latter if we have one slate of officers. Keep it moving quickly. Do we have a nomination for vice chair? I will nominate Mr. Harris.
A second.
Second, Mr. Wilson. Any other nominations? And, okay, and then do we have a nomination for Secretary Treasurer? I will nominate...
Yes.
A second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other nominations? Very well. Well, we have a slate of officers as John Preer Chair, Mr. Harris, Matt Harris as Vice Chair, and Mr. Johnny Wilson as Treasurer. I move that we vote on that as one slate of officers. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroud.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
This is seven zero.
Thank you. So we have items one through seven, our consent agenda items. I read the list of those off a moment ago. Does anyone in, I will open a public comment on any consent agenda item and also invite anyone who wishes to have one of the consent agenda items removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda to speak up and do so now.
Mr. Chairman, this is Josh King. The engineering department and the applicant, the applicant for item number two, which would be Foxland Phase Six Public Infrastructure Improvements, request that this item be pulled and deferred for a future meeting date.
All right, so item number two will be pulled from the consent agenda and deferred. Do we have anyone in the public who has raised their hand to speak on or request pulling one of the items?
At this time, if you are a member of the public and would like to speak on any of the consent agenda items, which is items one through seven except for item two, please indicate so by raising, using the raise your hand function located at the bottom of the screen. Or if you're calling us via phone, you can hit star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. Mr. Chairman, I have one call, I have one person who wishes to speak on this item.
Certainly.
Michelle, your line has been unmuted.
Thank you. This is Michelle Juvent, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I did send in a letter and I saw it was in your packet, but I didn't know if it was possible to, at this time, talk about adding a crash gate at Duncan between the Windsong and Halewood Development. I think, I mean, I stated in my letter what my reasons were, but I think it's just really important to not connect an older neighborhood with roads that don't have sidewalks into a very dense commercial and high-density development like Windsong. And I just think that there will have a lot of accidents happening in, in the Halewood neighborhood if we connect those, that road through. That was my comment about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Josh, did you say that there was a, a letter that Michelle had sent? Could we enter that into the record? Not, you don't have to read it, but just include it in the minutes?
We will. It was included in your packet and we will make sure that the letter itself makes it into the minutes.
Yes. Do I need to read it? I do have a copy of it, but it is in your packets.
No.
Yeah. Thank you. No, ma'am, I've got it right here.
Okay.
With that, I will, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Josh, is anyone raising their hand?
At this time, if you are a member of the public and would like to speak on any of the consent agenda items, please indicate so by raising your hand using the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen or by hitting star nine on your telephone. Mr. Chairman, no one at this time has indicated they'd like to speak on this item.
Mr. Chairman, is it all right if I address Michelle Pascal's call?
Certainly, Ms. Love. Go ahead.
That was, that crash gate was brought up by me several times during city council meetings and it was told to us by Chief Williams of the Gallatin Fire Department that we were not able to use a crash gate. So that is why it hasn't been done.
Is it due to liability reasons?
John, might I speak?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Dr. Organe.
After dealing with crash gates for 20 years, they work poorly, if at all. And Halewood is not going to have people driving through. The people at Halewood are going to have a lot more accessibility to 109 in both directions. It's going to help Halewood and I just think we'd make a mistake to even discuss crash gates. They don't work.
Okay. Josh, do we have any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, no one else has indicated they'd like to speak on this, any of these consent agenda items.
All right. With that, I will close the public comment and ask, is there any member of the Planning Commission who wishes to pull any of the items off of consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the consent, the six of the items on the consent agenda, item number two being deferred at the request of the applicant.
Second.
Was that a second by Mr. Harris, I believe?
Yes.
Yes, second by Matt Harris. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, if you'll please take a roll call vote. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda items, with the exception of number two, indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroud. Mr. Stroud.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
This is seven zero.
Thank you. I'll just tell y'all, if I get knocked offline, it's because it's about to get rough outside my window out here. It's a storm. That's okay. Mr. Harris will take over if I do. We'll go right into the regular agenda, starting with item number eight. Now, again, I'll remind you that items number eight, nine, and 10 are all the same property, but they are separate items and we'll have a public comment on each one. But if you have a public comment, I urge you to address your public comment to the, the specific item we'll be addressing. Eight, number eight is the Annexation and Plan of Service. Item number nine is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. If you have comments specifically about the layout and the plan, I'm sorry, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And then item number 10 is the rezoning with Preliminary Master Development Plan. That's the layout of the property. So we'll, but we will have staff present all three items since it's so interconnected. Or I should ask staff, do you wish to present it as one item or do you have three separate staff reports that are specific?
I'm happy to present it all together, but I will split it up by item in my discussion.
Very good. Go ahead, Gillian.
Yes. For item, item number eight this evening, this is for the annexation of the Bowles Farm property. It is located at Highway 25 and Highway 109 is approximately 655 acres and it is along the north and south side of the new Albert Gallatin Extension. This property is contiguous with the city limits. Within the last couple of years, multiple rights of way within this area were also annexed into the city. And this is the boundary survey they provided of the property. For item number nine, this is for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the Bowles Farm property. This is specific to the Gallatin on the Move 2020 Plan. This item only comes to Planning Commission. It does not go on to city council like the annexation and the rezoning will. The applicant requests approval to change the character area designation of a 256-acre portion of the Bowles Farm from the North Gallatin Emerging Business Park Character Area to the Emerging Walkable Community Character Area. Up in the left-hand corner of your screen, you can see what the current land use map shows and the larger image is what they are proposing. And these are the greater character area maps. You can see it up here in the corner of the property where they have this blue and then the proposed change. As you can see from the exhibit, the southern portion of the Bowles Farm is already designated as Emerging Walkable Community Character Area. The expansion of the Emerging Walkable Community Character Area will support additional residential and commercial development that will by extension also support a future business park in the preserved 90 acres of the North Gallatin Emerging Business Park Character Area, which is in blue. Item number 10 this evening is for the rezoning in the PMDP for the Bowles Farm property made up of 655 acres. The applicant proposes to rezone 436.61 acres to R8 PRD, which is one of our planned residential development zonings. 132.92 acres to the mixed-use zoning, which is the blue, along Highway 109, and 86.93 acres to PPP, which is our planned business park, and that's the red that you see on the screen. The residential portion of the property will include 1,390 residential housing units, such as single-family, single-family attached, and townhomes. The portion of residential area to the south of Albert Gallatin will be the active adult living community. The MU zoning along Highway 109 will include over 1 million square feet of commercial and office development and up to 900 additional residential units, including multifamily. The PPP zoning will be, will be prepped for a future business park development. A large portion of floodplain is located along the eastern property boundary. Most of this area will be preserved in open space and will be used for amenities and park area. So these items are item number eight for the annexation, item nine for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and item 10 for this rezoning. And these are some exhibits that we did see at the work session. Again, the applicant did give a presentation two weeks ago and went over these materials. But these go into the proposed architecture for the different types of development within this very large area. And then you have your, your business park. So going back to the main slide, this annexation request and the rezoning will go on to city council for, following Planning Commission recommendation. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment just stays with Planning Commission. These items, we did hold a public comment in December, but remember, these items were deferred at that time, so we will have a second public comment this evening. And as you said, Chairman, one for each of the items. And I believe the applicant is here and if they want to expand upon anything. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have a representative of the applicant, please state your name.
Yes, sir. This is John Haas, Principal with Edge Planning Landscape Architecture and Urban Design. And out of respect to everyone's time this evening and the, the length of the agenda, I'll keep my comments very brief. Number one, I want to say thank you for allowing us to be before you tonight in this format. And also let you know that we did our best and, and had a community open house last Thursday and given COVID and, and those types of things, we got the notification out and worked around that and had a, had a good meeting with some very good input and, you know, good outreach and, and touches with neighbors within the community. Maybe some of those will speak later tonight. We'll see. I also want to just update you very quickly. We've continued to work with staff since the workshop, much as we continue to do throughout this process and, and have been very great to work with and I think everything's going very well. Also, wanted to let you all know that Mr. Fenton had made a comment about some of the concerns he had about the planned business park and the acreage. We've also continued to speak with him and reach out through a couple of different team members, myself as late as this afternoon, to let him know that we are committed to continuing to work through and, and address his concerns as, as we move forward. So I wanted to let everyone aware of that. And then lastly, I'll just say that because the three items are on here successively, I'll make myself available to answer any questions y'all may have. I respectfully request your positive actions on all three of these items this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want, before I open it to a public comment, I want to get, I want to find out if some of our other departments wish to speak up, including engineering and economic development. Is Mr. James Fenton with us tonight?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Haas and I did have a conversation this afternoon addressing my concern that enough of this be set aside for what was originally two-thirds to be a planned business park. And as we've all discussed, it was the major reason we obtained the funding for this development. As is shown on this particular layout right now, as I expressed two weeks ago and to Mr. Haas today, that's really not sufficient. We are, however, beginning to enjoin in conversations that will allow us to maybe put some covenants in place that will allow for the proper kind of development. My concern from the beginning of this process has been that we need to set aside a sufficient space for there to be employment opportunities that attract good-paying jobs. And, and that's subjective comment and I realize that. But my concern with the, all the spaces in blue on the, on the, you know, that you can see on there, while it does have the ability to, to be office space, it also allows for other uses that don't attract, you know, those higher-paying jobs that, that we need in our community. So at this point in time, you know, again, with my conversation with Mr. Haas today, we have the ability possibly to enjoin in conversations that will allow us to put restrictions on some of that that will bring a better sense of confidence to me.
Will we know about those, the outcome of that before it goes to council?
Yes, ma'am, you will. I will not let it go to council until we've had a resolution of that.
Thank you.
So I just want to ask Mr. Fenton, if I understand you properly correctly, you're all right with the plan. But you'll address your concerns at the council level? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't mean to do. I'm asking if I-
And I'm, no, I'm not okay with it right now. But I do see that we have a path forward and will continue enjoying those conversations. And, and I will make sure that the city is, is, is made whole before this moves forward, before it receives my support. I'm not in a position to, to push it forward or stop it. That's not, that's not something, I don't get to cast a vote. That's what you folks get to do. So I, I will just make my concerns known. And again, my conversation with Mr. Haas today was, was one that was, you know, I, I felt good about. So you guys can make your decision. And just know that I will make sure that the city is in a good position before I give my support.
What was his response to your concerns?
So I addressed my concerns actually to the broker who had relayed that to the, to Edge in a timely fashion. And it, his was to come back with the fact, well, let's talk about putting some restrictions on that area. So right now, this is not necessarily a north-south picture, but if we allow this to be considered as north-south, you've got Hatton Track that is running north and south through the development. And when you get down close to 109, the, yes, right there, the blue area on the left. Thank you. Yes, that's the area that we're concerned about. And, and that's the area that we're talking about putting some restrictions on to allow the kind of development that goes in there. As, you know, and I, I don't mean to sound glib, but with the, the zoning they're asking for now, it allows dry cleaners, it allows mattress door sales. It allows all kinds of stuff that really isn't beneficial to our community. And so it's my intent to continue the conversation with developers to ensure that whatever is allowed in there will indeed be something that is beneficial and, and allows for hiring of, of good paying jobs into our community.
So are you in favor of enlarging the business park and take some of that I, that shown?
Again, Dr. O'Gane, maybe we just put restrictions on that blue section to the left of Hatton Track that make sure that, that they don't have convenience stores in there. They don't have mattress stores in there. They don't have those kinds of things that aren't going to add to our community.
What's the downside to enlarging the area adjacent to it?
The, the flexibility for the developer. And I know we don't all, we don't necessarily need to keep that at the top of our conversation, Dr. O'Gane. I think we're fortunate that we have a, a single developer that's willing to take this down and put a master plan in place instead of piecemeal this. And we want to make this as approachable and successful as we can for them. Just, I would hope you rest assured that I will make sure that our city is, is, remains whole in this conversation.
Mr. Fenton, do, do you believe you'll be comfortable with the restrictions in that area? If you guys can work out the, work them out?
I'll make sure I am. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm not going to do something that doesn't benefit our community. Now, this may not be, you know, reserved for 100,000 square foot, you know, R and D facility. There may be some amenities that are involved in this that make that park even more successful. Because of the kind of companies that we're going after now, we're moving away, away from manufacturing, away from, you know, that kind of, of business right now. We have to keep in mind that the amenities that surround that kind of a development are very, very important. And R and D facilities, you know, those kinds of things. Those companies demand that they have amenities close to them. So part of that will be involved in that, but we will limit that and make sure that the vast majority of that is held open for employment opportunities to benefit our community.
Mr. Fenton, question about, just visually on this map. You were talking about two thirds of the developments, the development area to be reserved for that, what you're talking about with the mark. I'm not saying that we do this, but just saying the blue area, how much? So the red area is what you're talking about, but the blue area is what we're talking about putting restrictions on?
On, on just the part north or actually to the left of Albert Gallatin right now. That's, that's where we're at, at this point in time. And if this body feels that we need to include more of that in the conversation, I'm willing to adapt that. I just, at this point in time, we're just trying to make sure everything to the left of Albert Gallatin on this map is, has, has restrictions that allow us to have the amenities and the kind of companies that we want. And to actually exclude, the, the intent is to exclude those kind of, of commercial businesses that aren't going to help our, they're not going to raise our per capita income, that aren't going to provide the city's revenue stream that we're looking for and the employment opportunities.
Mr. Haas, if you're still there, do, do you guys feel like you'll be able to, to accommodate Mr. Fenton's concerns?
Yes, I'm, I'm here. Can, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you, you, we've been working with Mr. Fenton throughout this process. And, and quite honestly, we recognized when we were working with the Bowles family that this was a shift in, in terms of the acreage. But as I said before, and I'll say again, and I will say it at the council meeting, I would say somewhere approximately 90% of the uses that Mr. Fenton is citing that are available in the planned business park are also available in the MU. The, the reality is that we're asking for 1.5 million square feet of, of entitlements for, for office, you know, commercial within that MU blue, blue area. We have done a study in the past of parcel F, which is the southwest corner of, of the, of the interchange at Highway 109 and Albert Gallatin Extension. That study yielded 950,000 square feet of office on that corner alone. I think where, where we are with the client and with Mr. Fenton is there are some uses that are permissible in the PBB. For instance, light manufacturing, warehousing, storage, outdoor storage that we do not want along the Albert Gallatin frontage. So that's why we decided the line was where it is. It's about 300 feet of depth. We did not want those uses right at the gateway to the city, so to speak. We understand Mr. Fenton's concern. So what we said is instead of switching that to planned business park, let's look at what we can do to, and, and what I asked him to do specifically today was go through the list, the list of uses that are listed on sheet one of our cover sheet of our submittal. And those are permitted uses within MU. And let's start by you cross out everything you don't want to see there and I'll talk to our client. Because I, I hear what he's saying about dry cleaners and, but a restaurant may be a great use right there on that corner for any research park that keeps traffic off of Albert, the Albert Gallatin Extension. So I have no doubt we will work it out. I am always going to argue the point that the majority of those uses and the uses specifically that Mr. Fenton cites in regards to high paying jobs and economic return will be every bit of available, as available in parcel H, D, F, E, all of that, all of that area in the blue. And they very well could be more attractive than the planned business park because of the direct access to those parcels. It would not surprise me one bit if the first research facility wanted to come in and go to parcel F as opposed to the planned business park. So absolutely, we, our goal is to work it out. Our goal is to make this as clean as possible. I believe one thing I neglected to say is that we are in agreement with all the staff comments on this. And I think at this point, there's, there's four comments and, and really three of them address the plan. One is a standard comment. We are exceedingly proud on a project of this size and this complexity that we've been able to get to this point with really only three comments we've got to, to work towards. This comment with Mr. Fenton being the fourth. And I don't believe, and I would ask staff to correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe CCNRs or any type of covenants and restrictions are part of the preliminary master development plan. But they are part of the final master development plan. So we would, we would feel very comfortable moving forward. And I gave Mr. Fenton my word today and as a representative of the client, the client has given me his word that we will continue to work towards some, some restriction on those uses that can be applied legally to those parcels to, to, to make Mr. Fenton a little more supportive.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right.
Chairman, as I am new to this, do, let me just ask you a question. Do we make our comments before a public comment or after?
I know, yeah, this is, thank you so much for bringing that up, Mrs. Love. This has gotten away from me and I was trying to get, I was wanting to hear from economic development and then wanting to hear from engineering so that we had all of staff's and departmental comments. But we've kind of gotten into a deliberation and I don't want to go there. So thank you. Let me hear from engineering and then I want to open it up to a public comment. And I only am doing in that order so that the public gets an opportunity to hear any of engineering's comments or concerns as a representative of the city. Do we have a representative from engineering present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Brian Rashner with Engineering. Just wanted to reiterate what the city engineer has said in the work session meeting. We've got 1,390 units out here. I don't know how many of those units are active adult units. The active adult is coming out into two locations with an emergency access and a third location. City engineer just wants to reiterate, it would be best to take that, that entrance that's down there on the west side, coming off the spine road that parallels 109 and have that possibly come in on 25. Just, just for the sake of traffic. We've only gotten some preliminary traffic numbers now, so we're not exactly sure what, you know, what, what this will entail.
Could someone with a mouse pointer kind of illustrate where Brian was referring to?
Yeah, Brian, could you clarify that for me? I wasn't sure.
Yeah, between parcel E and D of the blue right there, that's the main entrance for the active adult, yes. It would be best if that came out on Red River Road and, and it lined up with Summerlin. They did, yeah, they did comply and put in a, a temporary entrance there with a, with an emergency access, which was, was their compromise to that. There you go. Thank you for highlighting that.
Brian, I'll just ask one question. Is, does engineering have any comments on the number of access points along Albert Gallatin or is that no, no longer an issue?
That's not an issue. We're, we're comfortable with that.
All right. At this point, Brian, did you have anything else to add or?
No, sir. That's all.
All right. At this point, I will finally open a public comment. And if anyone would like to comment on this item, again, item number eight, what we're specifically having a public comment on is the annexation and plan of service. Number nine, we'll be talking about the comprehensive plan amendment. And number 10 will be a public comment regarding the rezoning and preliminary master development plan. I know that's a little confusing, but I just want you to get your public comment in on the right item so it's recorded in the minutes. Josh, do we have anybody in the public who would like to speak in regards to item number eight, the annexation and plan of service for the Bowles property?
At this time, if you are a member of the public and would like to speak on this item, please indicate so by using the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen. And this is specifically to talk about item number eight, which is the annexation and plan of service for the Bowles property. And Mr. Chairman, we did get one email comment. It was in reference to all three projects, but I will read it for this one. Says, Josh, my name is Tim Bowles. I'm, oh, this is from the property owner. Should have read this before, but my name is Tim Bowles. I'm one of the trustees for the Bowles Farm that fronts Red River Road and runs along 109. The proposed Hatton Track Road runs through our property as well. The annexation rezoning meeting that occurs tonight might need a statement from a family member. I'm sending you our bullet points. If you're going to state these in the meeting or you wish me to comment online, I'll be viewing through a computer. So if you are Tim Bowles, I'm just now reading your email and I will, okay, Tim, you've been unmuted. If you'd like to read these bullet points on behalf of yourself and your family. Maybe not. So the land has been in their family for 35 years. They have worked with the city and the state on Highway 109 and the new Albert Gallatin Extension. Both right-of-way acquisitions have impacted their farm operations. The farm has been approached numerous times over the years by builders and developers interested in purchasing portions of the farm. The family was not interested in selling smaller portions with no plans for cohesion. It began developing a master plan for the farm with the Edge Group before any outside developer was involved. It was important to us that the vision we had was achievable and consistent with the city's land use policies. We feel most fortunate that a developer is involved that agrees with our vision and has the capabilities to make it a reality. Happy to see a mix of uses along with the protection of so many existing trees and natural elements that will be incorporated into a green space system for all residents of Gallatin to enjoy. This is, this is what we would love to convey, either me or a representative of the city. So that is a written statement from Tim Bowles on behalf of his family, the current owners of the property.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Do we have any other? Anyone else in the public who wishes to speak? Josh, do we have anyone else who has raised their hand?
Tim has raised his hand and, Tim, I've read the statement for this one, but we're going to have two more public hearings on this property. We can, you can have, read the statement again or make any additional comment at either of the next two public comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes. There is a bit of an echo when you speak, so we'll work through that. You may have to turn down the speakers that are near you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, you, you hit all the bullet points for me. And so we were just trying to come online and speak, but I think you, you've said everything. I guess maybe there's nothing left that you need to hear from me.
Thank you, Tim. Mr. Chairman, no one else has indicated they'd like to speak on item number eight, which is the annexation and plan of service.
All right. At this time, I'll close the public comment on the annexation and plan of service. This is a little bit unusual. I certainly would like um, in the past, we have combined public comments on uh, all the items, so we have a chance to hear from the public before we vote on any of the items. But I have been advised that we need to keep these public comments separate per item. Uh, somebody advised me if I'm going off the reservation, uh, if I'm going down a bad path here. Can we discuss and have public comments on items nine and ten before we come back and vote on each item? Or do we need to vote on an item before we move to the public comment on item nine? I'm hoping that Mrs. Alexander's online and can advise me.
Hello, John. This is Latasha Alexander, Staff Attorney for the City. I don't think that there's a problem waiting to vote until after you've had the public comments on each item. Since we combine the um, discussion or the presentation of each item, I just like it's important to have the discussion separate for each item. But I don't think there would be a problem if you waited to go back and vote after we've had the public comment.
Excellent. Okay, well then, um, I will um, instead of putting it to a formal vote, I'm just going to ask, is everyone in agreement with moving on to item number nine and having the public comment on that and then on to ten? And then we'll come back and vote on each item. Does anyone object? Great, then we will move to item number nine. We'll table item number eight. We'll come back to it. Um, item number nine is the Bowles Farm, the comprehensive plan amendment. Um, it's changing the community character area designation on the parcel. Josh, is there anyone from the public who uh, would like to uh, speak in regards to that? I'll open a public comment on item number nine.
If you are a member of the public and would like to speak on item, agenda item number nine, which is a comprehensive plan amendment for the, the Bowles Farm property, please indicate so by using the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen or by hitting star nine on your telephone if you are a call-in, if you are joining us via the telephone only. So that's uh, raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen or star nine on your telephone. And we have uh, Patrick Flowers. Patrick, your line's been unmuted.
Thank you, Josh. Um, just wanted to weigh in on this. I think it's an excellent use of planning and the tools that we have, just seeing this being a large chunk developed all at once, just kind of to echo Mr. Bowles uh, comments. Uh, I think this is the kind of smart planning that the city needs. It reminds me kind of of the Maryland Farms development uh, with a little more retail thrown, or uh, homes thrown in. But I, I think it is a, a good use of our planning and, and I fully support this. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Flowers, can you give us your address, please?
I'm at three fifty East Main Street.
In Gallatin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Josh, do we have anyone else who has raised their hand?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, at this time, no one else has raised their hand using the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen or by hitting star nine on their telephone. Uh, we do have Michelle. Uh, Michelle, your line's been unmuted.
Thank you, Josh. I actually just, I have um, people asking how they can call in. Can you give that information one more time? Um, because some, somebody just texted me that their internet's out. How can they call in to make a comment? It's, I don't believe on this, this item that they want to comment, but I, I, I don't know what phone number to tell them. If you could give that. I know you gave it a lot of times. I'm sorry, but I can't find it. Oh, cool, thanks.
So it's displayed on the screen. Uh, if you have no internet, it's area code four seven zero three eight one two five five two. And it's going to ask you for a meeting ID and that number is eight nine one four five five eight seven two nine five. And I'll post this to uh, Facebook, uh, just in case your, one of your friends does still have internet access, they can forward it to you.
And Ms. Jevons, can you give us your address?
Oh, can you hear me still?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, thirteen thirty-five Long Hollow Pike. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
Josh, do we have anyone else raising their hand to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one else, no one else has indicated they'd like to speak.
Alright, uh, at this time, we will table item number nine and move to item number ten. Uh, which is the Bowles Farm rezoning with preliminary master development plan. Uh, and we will open a public comment um, in regards to item number ten. Do we have anyone wishes to speak uh, specifically on the rezoning and preliminary master development plan for the Bowles property?
At this time, if you'd like to speak on this item, please indicate by raising, raising, using the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen or hitting star nine on your telephone. And Mr. Chairman, if you wanted to wait a couple of minutes in case there's anyone that's uh, was not able to join us that is now being, that is now calling in, I'll make that announcement again in just a moment.
Yeah, let's give it a couple of minutes and also um, I learned in another meeting that there's a good, two, there's a couple minute lag on Facebook. Um, so I want to make sure that those folks that might be doing it about Facebook give an opportunity to speak.
Mr. Chair, uh, as I'm receiving it, Facebook is about uh, ten seconds behind.
Oh, okay.
At this, this meeting.
That's good to know.
After public comments are over, do we have an opportunity to voice any concerns of our own?
Absolutely, Ms. Love. I'm going, I'm going to go back to item eight, nine and ten. We'll deliberate on all three and talk about them. I'm, I'm sorry, this is just wanted to make sure that we um, we give everybody an opportunity to speak. I think that we've given it long enough there on item ten. Josh, do we have anybody raising their hand?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, we have no one raising their hand indicating they'd like to speak on item, agenda item number ten. Bowles Farm rezoning with preliminary master development plan.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public comment and we'll table item number ten. We'll go back to item number eight, which is the um, annexation and plan of service and um, I'm going to open it for discussion amongst the commission members. We will need to have a separate vote on each item, number eight, number nine and number ten.
I'm not sure where this goes.
Well.
But my concern actually is, I really like the active adult residences. But my concern is with the nine hundred townhomes and apartments, which I would love for Mr. Haas to consider changing over to uh, at least condominiums owned instead of apartments or more commercial instead of so many of those residences that are in, that are not in the active adult part. So that is my concern, that is my main concern, as well as if we move the main entrance of the active adult onto Red River Road, I fear that that Red River Road can't handle that. And I'm sure I probably shouldn't be on number eight for that, but I didn't know where to put it.
I would think, Ms. Love, I would think that uh, item, that, that specific concern, legitimate concern would be on the um, item number ten, which is discussing the specifics of the uh, preliminary master development plan. But hey, we're talking about all three of them, really, and we'll just, we just have to have three separate votes, so it's fine, whatever you bring up. Good point.
Okay, maybe I was early on there, but those are my concerns.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Haas, do you have anything to say about that?
Can you hear me? It, it says my hand was still raised. I didn't know I was on yet.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, uh, yes, um, one of the things, and I was quickly looking at some numbers, but I, I would love to start off with something that uh, completely agree with you, Commissioner Love. Red River Road, that access, we have had that discussion with engineering and strongly uh, believe that the best access point is onto the connector road and I will say that was a hundred percent verified by the residents of that corridor on Red River Road that showed up at our community meeting. Um, they talked about uh, limiting access to it. They talked about um, bikers and walkers on Red River Road. Where we, we even discussed, you know, maybe we could add a trail along that edge. Uh, but it was important to us to keep as much of that frontage east of the connector road. As you can see, it's green space or large lots that are going to come across this green space. So we really felt like, number one, the client has said he did not want more than two entrances and actually, based on their experience for this number of units, they would normally only have one. So two was a bit of a compromise for him. And then he really felt like it was important to um, align that with, with the connector road. So we've talked with engineering about it. I don't know that we, you know, either one of us are strongly opposed or strongly uh, a- agree. But I thought we had settled this, that this was an acceptable solution. Um, so if we need to revisit that, we can, but we do feel pretty, you know, we feel like it's in the right place now and the community as a whole would rather not have an entrance, you know, further down Red River Road. Um, in regards to the residential units in um, in the MU district, that district makes up, um, I'm looking at my numbers here. At the acreages, if you'll give me a second. It's um, it's approximately a hundred and thirty-three acres. Uh, so you know, it's, it's a little less than nine units per acre overall. Uh, what I would say is we are really trying to pay attention to the scale and the aesthetic of whatever that residential product is. But certainly, all of the single family, including villas, townhomes, single family detached is permitted within those uses. Um, you know, uh, from um, townhomes or uh, a, a luxury rental property. Uh, the reality is, if, if the market permitted, they could all nine hundred could be condominium. Um, again, we're trying to be as flexible as we can to let the, let the market um, determine, uh, so that we've got a, a healthy, sustainable community. Um, so that's, that's where we are with that. Um, we, we haven't had any discussions about limiting one product over another. We feel like it, it's, it's best uh, to allow the market to react to that um, with the architectural restrictions we have in place.
Thank you. I, I feel like Gallatin is saturated with apartments right now and that we would I believe council would be much more comfortable if they were owned instead of rented.
I, I understand that. I, and, and I don't know, I know that um, we can certainly continue those conversations. Uh, I'm familiar with some uh, communities that have made that same requirement and, and um, in some cases, it's been successful, in some cases, it, it hasn't. So we, we can obviously continue to have those conversations as we move on to council. If we're permitted to.
Thank you for answering.
Mr. Haas, I have a question. The, the, the connection, down there is a click parcel D where it connects into highway twenty-five. Is that, is that going to be a, a signalized intersection?
Uh, of course, there will be uh, additional studies, but it's anticipated at this point that it would be a signalized intersection. Um, uh, you know, based on uh, the studies where we stand right now, that that portion, that um, southern end uh, is, you know, not in the first couple of phases. So uh, it would be determined as probably as parcel D is developed when, when and if that signal is uh, is needed and when it gets installed.
Yeah. I, I think it's a good idea to have the traffic circulate internally and then have the controlled access point. So that, that, that makes sense to me.
So we've had some discussion. Do we have a motion? I don't believe we have a motion on the floor yet.
No, you didn't.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve item nine.
You got.
Albert Strawther, is that correct?
We're still on eight.
Was that second by Mr. Strawther?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Strawther and that, that enables us to have the discussion and deliberation. Any further discussion? Being none, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, will you please take a roll call vote, uh, all in favor of approval of uh, item number eight, which is the annexation and plan of service? Indicate by saying aye.
Chair, career.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Ah.
Mr. Strather.
Aye.
Ms. Hibler.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. We'll move to item number nine, um, uh, which is the comprehensive uh, plan amendment. I'll go ahead in order to foster some discussion on this. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve item number nine. We have a second by Mr. Harris.
So. Before we vote.
Yes, sir. We'll have discussion. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Will.
Is, uh, of course, I'm still concerned about uh, the shoulders on Red River Road. Nobody has addressed it for me, so I need somebody to address that before we vote.
And again, this specific item is changing the comprehensive plan. It's an amendment to our comprehensive plan. Um, I will raise one question I had about the uh, amending the comprehensive plan. The north arrow on this plan actually points to the left of the plan. So to the north of uh, the MU area and to the west of the planned business park, there's a small parcel of land that's not part of this annexation. It's still designated as rural residential zoning. I'm assuming that's not part of this property that's being annexed. Is that correct?
Right here, adjacent to the blue?
Yes, it's uh, the words rural residential zoning is in the middle of it. Um, it also says sheet TM dash one two. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on a page. Yeah, there you go. That um, wedge of, that's it right there. That is not part of this annexation, is it?
It is not, no.
Alright, but when we change the comprehensive plan, I think we should change is that rural residential zoning in the city or is it outside the city? Is it annexed?
It's outside the city.
Oh.
It's a different property owner.
Okay.
Chair, that, that property is zoned rural residential. It's a remnant that uh, was part of the property to the west of highway one oh nine and was bifurcated by highway one oh nine when that was constructed. Leftover and also has a easement on it for conservation. So it's tied to that property to the west of the um, uh, state highway. And it's not intended to be developed because of that easement.
Oh, well, good. That answers my question. I was right that we were creating a pocket that could only be accessed through the planned business park. And I wanted to make sure that we changed the, the plan. Well, that area, but it's not even in the city. It's not our plan, so. But it's for, uh, conservation. That's wonderful. Other discussion on changing the, um, comprehensive land plan? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval of item number nine, which is changing the comprehensive plan, uh, for this property, indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroud.
Aye.
Ms. Hibler.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. Now we'll move to item number ten, which is the, um, the specifics, the rezoning, uh, with preliminary master development plan. And I think this is where, uh, Mr. Wilson, your comment is, uh, very applicable about the shoulders, but, uh, we'll I'll need a motion on the floor so that we can initiate some discussion.
Chair Perrier, actually, if I, can I have one moment?
Certainly.
And I, I meant to mention this at the beginning of the meeting, I did not, but I, I, just for full disclosure, I, I'm in the process of acquiring, or one of my businesses is two residential properties out in that vicinity. I don't believe it has any impact on what we're discussing, but just for the public record to make sure I stated that.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, we do need a second to proceed with, uh, discussion.
We don't have a motion on the floor yet. Ah, thank you. Mr. Harris makes a motion to approve number ten. Do I hear a second?
Second.
By Mr. Stronger. Um, so Mr. Wilson, you had asked questions about the, uh, the shoulder and the curbing. What area specifically were you addressing?
Uh, the Red River Road, uh, itself. I, I want to see shoulders over the road.
I, yes.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Jim, this is Jim Harrison. We, we will be providing shoulders and, and also lanes, uh, that transition as needed towards our new roadways along that section. Uh, so I just wanted to confirm that. We've looked at that preliminarily with our traffic engineer. So I just wanted to confirm that for the planning.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
All right, then you'll have my vote.
Yes, sir.
Other discussion or questions? Any discussion on the motion that's before us?
I'm still not happy with nine hundred town, extra townhomes and apartments. I may, I may vote to move this on forward, but I may not vote yes when it comes to council. Depending on what's told to us then.
I have a question about the, um, what Mr. Fenton said earlier about placing restrictions on that. And maybe this is a question for staff. Um, if it's in the form of covenants and restrictions on property, my understanding is that the city does not enforce private covenant. So if restrictions were placed on the MU area, how does that protect us? I'm going to throw that question specifically to Bill, our planning, our, our city planner.
If there are private covenants and the city is not a party to those covenants, and Latasha let me know, then we don't have authority over them. We would only have authority over the zoning documents. So if you want to restrict specific commercial uses from the MU district or on certain parcels within the MU district, you need to identify what those restrictions would be as part of the zoning document. So, I mean, the covenants and restrictions can be changed by the developer, and that's the ones who create them or members of the homeowners or property owners association.
And would those restrictions that you're talking about placing on it, uh, be done at the FMVP stage?
The property owner now can place any restrictions they want on the property as it is now. They, they don't have to wait until the FMVP to do that.
No, but you said it's important that we would place those restrictions on the zoning document. I assume that the zoning document would be the FMVP as far as restrictions.
Yeah, that would probably be, um, well.
Is that when the plat is registered?
I, I would think that, well, that's a different type of covenants. I, I would want you to identify those uses as part of the PMDP that you want to restrict, not wait to the FMVP. Now, what could happen is that, and this happens particularly with most master development plans, is when they come in with an FMVP, they're also amending the, the preliminary master development plan. So you could add certain uses back in or further restrict them at that stage.
So, Mr. Moore, if I understand that correctly, which saying is if we move this forward and it comes back to the master, the final master development plan, and they don't, you know, add the restrictions, we could, we, we'd have the opportunity to to weigh back in on it, correct?
Well, again, if they come in with a preliminary master development plan, you could propose restrictions. There's no guarantee that they'll agree to those.
Well, that makes it a little tricky because I think that the, the developers wanting to work with us and wanting to address Mr. Fenton's concerns, but it sounds to me like we need to make sure that we get those restrictions on the MU zoning spelled out in detail right now because council doesn't vote on the PMDP, do they? They vote on the FMVP.
Now, council only votes on the PMDP. Y'all, the commission votes on the FMVP.
So we have to make conditions, um, along the MU parcels. So that's what you're saying, that the conditions that can be, a little bit flexible later, but just right now making a condition when we vote on it. Is that what you're saying?
If that's what y'all want to do. Now, you're, what you're, Joshua or one of us will have to start listing all of those formidable uses in the MU district, and you're going to have to make a decision as to which ones you think are acceptable. Uh, I assume just for parcel I, but, uh, you could put other restrictions on the others if you wish to.
Well, since they're still in discussion with Mr. Fenton and the staff, could we put that into the, put that into as well, the condition, the condition based upon the discussion, like as we've done a few other things in the past? And then it comes back to us and we can, yes and no?
Hey, this is Latasha. I'm going to interject for a second because if you all remember what Mr. Haas said, he is willing to work with Mr. Fenton regarding the businesses that go into that property. But the issue is what he can legally do. And so, John, to your question, with those restrictive covenants and restrictions that the property owner may place on there, the city has no control or authority over those. And as he stated previously, whether he can legally prevent businesses that our zoning ordinance allows is an issue. So that's why he said he will do whatever he can do legally to, um, reach some happy medium with Mr. Fenton. So whatever our zoning ordinance allows in those districts, we cannot exclude them because we want to. We have to have legal basis for those exclusions, and those legal bases may, we might have to change our zoning ordinance. But those restrictions and covenants would have to be done by the property owner and enforced by the property owner.
We have had properties that are zoned mixed.
Let me just ask a question. Um, out at Greenley, uh, years ago, uh, they brought before us an SP district, which basically just did, they did their own overlay on top, which was more restrictive than the city. Um, why couldn't this be, be considered, fortunately, this be considered as an SP plan where the, um, developer has placed certain restrictions on it that the city might not have the latitude to exercise, but they, they will.
And this is Latasha Alexander against staff attorney. I think that's what their intent is from what I heard from Mr. Haas.
A question for Mr. Fenton. James, so parcel I, so would, would, would your preference have been all along that that was, um, the P, PB zoning? Is that, would that have been, you know, in a perfect world, all of that would have been, you know, parcel J would have continued all the way down to Hatton Track?
Yes, yes. Agreed, agreed. Um, although, you know, continuing the conversations with developers, I understand that, that there may be some amenities that aren't necessarily, um, opportunities for higher paying jobs, but will enhance the rest of that development. And so, uh, I, I think there's some flexibility there, but, um, we will maintain some standard in there to ensure that, that what occurs in that area really does help move our community forward.
So, Mr. Ben, are you, are you comfortable with this moving forward? You know, as it is with the MU in that area? Working it out later. I mean, it's my concern is the same as I'm hearing from others is if it's restrictive covenants, is in the property owner could always change those. They don't have any, and the city would have no legal means to enforce them.
Agreed, and, and I hesitate to, uh, uh, place those decisions on this office. We're not necessarily, uh, um, the body that needs to make those decisions. But the conversations that we're having right now are heading in the right direction. I think that, um, the enforceability of covenants needs to be discussed as to who all has, uh, uh, an option to weigh in on them. Just to make sure. And, and gosh, overall, we are so fortunate to have a developer that's coming in and working with us. And this could have been piecemealed out and, you know, um, you know, the Bowles family has every right to just sell this it piece by piece to whoever they want to. And the fact that we're able to have these conversations, that we're able, able to have, uh, uh, an overview of what's looking to occur there, I think we're very, very fortunate. I hope you rest assured that, again, this office will make sure that, that we work to make sure that there is, um, the employment opportunities and the developability of that area that's necessary to make sure our community moves forward.
I appreciate that. I think the, the concern is how do we, you know, moving it forward for today's purposes without coming to come some kind of resolution?
Yeah, and, you know, I'm not on the attorney. I didn't stay in the Hall of the Inn last night, you know, so.
Here's, 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 here's the question that I'm, I'm getting at, and feel free to shoot holes into anybody on the, on the commission, but if, if we, if, if we were to, you know, to, to add a condition that parcel I was approved, but only as, you know, as the planned business park, would they be able to come back if they were able to come back with some restrictions or some, some way to further restrict it on the final master development plan that we could, we could, I don't know, not say to reverse that, but, but revisit it at a later time, but just to protect our interest for today? Does that make sense?
Well, Matt, let me just comment that the developer did point out that planned business park, although that's what the city wants to see more acreage of, planned business park allows for some, uh, things in it that we really don't want right there on Hatton Track, such as outside storage. So if we were to make that area the pinkish-red, whatever color that is, you might have some unintended consequences on there.
And that's why this conversation is continuing. Uh, it would, it would be great to have that as that, you know, that pink area just completely moved down to Hatton Track. But again, there are uses allowed in there that we don't necessarily want and won't be beneficial for the development of that area. So I, I feel more comfortable working with developers. And, uh, again, I'm, I, I don't feel like I need to be the discerning factor in this, but I'm willing to work to make sure that whatever is allowed in that area, given covenants, or however we move forward, will be beneficial for our community. I think there probably needs to be a decision or a, rather, a conversation with legal, with planning to, to maybe, um, remove the overall decision from the developer to this city so that we can make sure that what happens in there is, is correct. And, and Mr. Haas, you and I have not had a conversation about this. This has come up tonight, so I, I don't mean to, um, interject something in the conversation. We haven't had an opportunity to talk about. I, I truly think there's a, an ability for us to come together and make sure whatever happens there is the best thing for the city. We just need to make sure that it's enforceable, and, and that's been brought up by two or three members here tonight.
Mr. Chair, if I may say, we, we have had situations where developers have come in with a master plan and willingly restricted certain uses even though they're allowed by the zoning. And there may be certain uses in the MU zoning that the developer is not interested in applying to, uh, one or more of these parcels that they'd be willing to forego, uh, as a, I guess, the compromise that you are looking for.
Oh, so that's part of the zoning document. They could, they could willingly forfeit certain uses within the MU district on parcel I.
Uh, yes, they could. Uh, I'm not sure if they want to, but, uh, that's a possibility.
I think from what I've heard tonight, I think everybody is interested in getting to the same destination here. Everybody's interested in getting, um, the same thing. We have a motion on the floor, uh, in favor of it and a second to approve. I will add a, uh, an amendment to the motion to state that, um, the developer bring to council, um, a, a list of uses within the MU district that they, um, forfeit on parcel I.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we, we got a motion and a second, so, uh, one of the persons who made the motion or the second will have to add that condition in.
You're right. You're right. I can't say that. Somebody else will have to state it.
I believe I made the motion, so the, uh, so I'll, I'll add the amendment that the developer come to council with a list of uses in parcel I that they, um, they will eliminate.
Perfect. Do we have any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Who seconded that amendment?
We have seconded by Mr. Stronger, I believe. I'm looking.
I concur. I concur with the amendment.
Okay, I got you. So you're the second of the amendment. Okay, got you. All right. So you, what you want to do now is vote on the amendment and then go back and vote on the original motion.
All right, uh, so we have the amendment to vote on. Um, Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote? All in favor of the amendment, the motion indicate by saying aye.
We have lost Mary Ann from the audio, so, uh, I will do a roll call vote, starting with Chair Perrier.
Josh, I'm on the phone if you want me to do it.
Yes, please do. We, we got John, we got John already.
Okay, so Chair Perrier voted yes, did you say?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroud.
Yes.
Ms. Hibler.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
All right. Thank you. Now we need a vote on the original motion. And that is the motion to approve item number, uh, ten with all of staff's conditions.
Okay. Vice, uh, Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Stroud. Ms. Hibler. Passes seven zero.
Thank you. We have completed one item, one property.
Thank you.
Item number, we'll move to item number eleven, uh, which is, item number eleven and twelve are both the same property. Um, and, yes, that's right, eleven and twelve. So they'll be presented together, I hope, by staff, but we'll vote on them separately. Item number eleven is Woods Crossing, uh, Woods Crossing, formerly Woods Landing. It's an annexation and plan of service. And item number twelve is Woods Crossing, formerly Woods. And item number 12 is Woods Crossing, formerly Woods Landing, rezoning with preliminary master development plan. Which staff member is presenting this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Josh King. The owner and applicant request the Planning Commission recommend to Gallatin City Council a resolution to annex and a resolution to adopt a plan of service for the property consisting of 31.378 acres located west of Woods Ferry Road and south of Nichols Lane. It has a current address of 1460 Woods Ferry Road. Next slide, please, Jillian. The property is partially in the city and partially in the county, so you can see a line here roughly that says C-15, C-16. This is the boundary of the property line, but the right half or the eastern part of the property is in the city. The left half, or significantly more than half, the west part of the property is in the county. So the 31.378 acres is the property to the left. So it is from this line, the C-15, C-16 line to the west. The item was deferred by the applicant from the September 20 Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Department recommends approval of the resolution to annex and resolution to adopt a plan of service. And then the proposed zoning for the property is going from RR, which is rural residential in the county, and R40, low-density residential, to R8 PRD, medium-density residential, planned residential development district for the properties located at 1460 Woods Ferry Road. You can see on the screen here, it includes the TVA, an open space for the TVA easement, and then connections to the north, south, and the western parts of the property. Staff recommends approval of this preliminary master development plan and rezoning, which, which will create 122 single-family residential properties. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Josh. Do we have a representative for the applicant on line?
Oh, I have Hillary Bonham with Good All Homes. Hillary, your line's been unmuted.
Hi, thank you all so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Tonight, I just wanted to briefly share Woods Crossing. We actually renamed it because of our desire for this community to be more about nature preservation. I think in this time of COVID, everybody's been really excited to get outside and walk and ride their bike. And so with the beautiful natural resources that this property has, there's that stream running throughout. We've got lots of open space, and so we want to really really accentuate that with paved trails, connecting to the overall sidewalk system, benches throughout, and also really focusing on maintaining the natural buffer around the site and adding to that with lots of trees that are, can accentuate the property and also be kind of this boutique niche community that allows and adds to the emerging walkable neighborhood that is described in the Gallatin on the Move 2020 Plan. So really excited to present this community and hope you'll consider it for approval.
Thank you, Hillary. We also have Michael Dewey, the engineer of record on the project. Michael?
Good evening. My name is Michael Dewey with Dewey Engineering. We've worked with staff, we agree with all the conditions of approval. We've worked on the road alignment with engineering and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michael. At this time, we'll open it to, we'll open a public comment if there's anyone out there who would like to speak in regards to the item number 11, which is the annexation and plan of service for this property.
At this time, if you are a member of the public and would like to speak on item 11, which is the annexation and plan of service for the Woods Crossing development, please indicate so by raising your hand. We have Susan Chaffin Owens. Your line has been unmuted. And again, you can use, if you are calling in, you can hit star nine on your telephone to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you too for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm Susan Chaffin Owens. My two sisters and I are the owners of the property at 1460 Woods Ferry Road in Gallatin, seeking to become Woods Crossing. You know, I'm a lot like some of the folks listening tonight. I don't like change. When our mother died in 2005, my vision for our property was that it would stay just as it was and always remain a hobby farm. Maybe one of my siblings or one of our children would want to maintain the Chaffin presence on this wonderful piece of land. And if that didn't happen, I was confident that there would surely be a buyer who would want to farm on a small scale as our father had done for such a long time. For many of these 15 years, I prayed and hoped this would happen. But gradually, we all realized it would not. In the last couple of years, we've accepted this and had to begin looking for other options. When this offer came from Good All to buy our property and develop it, I felt so sad. Our lives as children on Woods Ferry Road had been idyllic. Not without problems, of course, but growing up in the countryside was a blessing and a privilege, and I'm grateful. I struggled to accept the changes that this would bring to our home place. Tearing down the house that our father had so lovingly built, even destroying some of the trees he planted that we climbed in, it was hard even to imagine it. But then one day, I realized something that would completely change my thinking. This land that we have cherished would now become a home to many families. Many children will run and climb and play and laugh and enjoy these acres. And that realization made it okay. It was time for our property to have a new life. I know that this will mean change for the community, but this gradual transformation has already begun with Clear Lake Meadows Development, which probably was under construction prior to the year 2000, and Patterson Farm Development, which began building in 2017. The planned continuation of Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard will further these ongoing changes. In a way, I am speaking for those folks who will be most impacted by the Woods Crossing development, yet have no voice in this discussion. Namely, those families who will buy the houses built here, whose kids will play here, the people who will make friends here, those whose futures will be bound up in this land and its promise. They will invest in the community, vote here, become active participants in the growing Gallatin economy, and hopefully make significant contributions to life in Sumner County. And so after 15 years, I am ready to urge this commission to vote to allow this well-planned development to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Do we have any other people in the public who wish to comment on this item?
This is the last call for item number 11, the annexation and plan of service for Woods Crossing. Please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen or hit star nine on your telephone if you are called in. Mr. Chairman, at this time, no one has indicated, no one else has indicated they'd like to speak on this item.
This time, we will close the public comment, and I'll entertain a motion on the floor.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Harris and seconded by Mrs. Love. Let me, I'm sorry, I managed, I let it get ahead of myself. On the last item, we heard public comments on both 11 and 12. I don't think there's anyone who wants to make a public comment on item 12, which is the rezoning with preliminary master development plan, but I want to make sure we hear from the public before we vote. So if we can table something, even though we have a motion on the floor, I hope that's not illegal.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. That would be the best. If, Miss Love, would you mind withdrawing your second just momentarily?
I'll withdraw.
Thank you. Let me table a number, item number 11, and let's just ask if there is a anyone from the public who would like to comment on item number 12, which is the rezoning with preliminary master development plan.
At this time, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen or hit star nine if you've called in. And this will indicate to me that you would like to speak on this item. This is item number 12, the master development plan and rezoning for Woods Crossing located at 1460 Woods Ferry Road. Mr. Chairman, at this time, no one has raised their hand, indicating they would like to speak on this item.
Thank you. Then we'll table number 12 and move back to 11. Matt, would you mind restating your motion? And Miss Love, please second it.
I make a motion to approve item 11, annexation of plan of service.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Harris and seconded by Mrs. Love. Any discussion on that? Being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval of item number 11, indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier?
Yes, aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Luther Strouger?
Yes.
Ms. Hibler?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. And then we'll move to item number 12, which is the rezoning with preliminary master development plan for this item.
Make a motion to approve item 12, the rezoning preliminary master development plan with staff's four conditions.
Thank you. Motion on the floor by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mrs. Love. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any discussion?
I got a question about the runoff. I know the people that live south of there, and they're very concerned about the runoff because that little ditch or creek, or whatever you call it, runs through their property, and it is going to change the water flow on their property.
This is Michael Dewey with Dewey Engineering. I can help with that. Staff did ask us to look into that drainage, and we have studied the predeveloped flows and post-developed flows, and we're providing six stormwater management areas for this development to attenuate the flows from predeveloped to post-developed, or post-developed flows down to predeveloped flows. And so therefore, there's the runoff leaving the site shall be less than the predeveloped flows that are currently flowing through that stream now.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey. Any other discussion? Being done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval of item number 12 with staff's four conditions, indicate by saying aye. Oh, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Chair Perrier? Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Dr. Organe?
Aye.
Mr. Strouger?
Aye.
Ms. Hibler?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to items 13 and 14, which are the same property. It's, 13 is Twin Eagles Phase 15 Annexation and Plan of Service, and item 14 is Twin Eagles rezoning with the preliminary master development plan. Both will come with a public comment, which we will hold separately, but will staff present the item that's one item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So item number, oh, the lights are flickering. Item 13 is the annexation and plan of service for Twin Eagles Phase 15. The owner and the applicant request Planning Commission recommend to the Gallatin City Council a resolution to annex and a resolution to adopt a plan of service for 59.10 acres located north of Wildcat Run and east of Douglas Lane. You can see on the map it, where it connects, where it is contiguous to the current city boundaries, and it does contain property that extends over to Douglas Lane. The property is contiguous to the city limits. Staff recommends approval of the annexation and plan of service. And for item 14, which is the development plan, the owner and applicant request approval to rezone 59.10 acres from RR Rural Residential, which is the county zoning district, to the MU Mixed Use District with a preliminary master development plan for Twin Eagles Phase 15. MU is consistent with how the remainder of Twin Eagles has been zoned. The applicant is requesting an exception to the 10-foot side yard setback requirement to allow five-foot side yard setbacks and an exception to the buffer yard requirements of type 30 buffer yards adjacent to rural residential county zoning to allow type 10 buffer yards. The applicant is also requesting a variance from section 2106.2 of the Gallatin subdivision regulations for a 10-foot wide P, Public Utility and Drainage Easement, PUDE. The Planning Department recommends approval of this resolution and of these variances. Also included with the attachments was a report from the County Highway Superintendent about the current status of Douglas Lane and what her recommendations on that are, and those were included in your packet. And again, both items 13 and 14 each come with a public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Before we get to item, before we get to the public hearing, I want to hear from engineering if they have anything to add to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one item that we're concerned about is that the construction of the main road, Dottie Drive, be included in phase one of this development and not phase six. I don't know if you want to count that for item 13 or 14.
Thank you, Brian. I think that we're getting input from the city departments on both the 13 and 14 at this time. So I will open it at this time to a to public comment on item 13, which is the annexation and plan of service. Item 14's comment will be regarding the rezoning with a preliminary master development plan. Item 13, is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you would like to speak on this item, please use the raise your hand function located at the bottom of the screen or hit star nine on your telephone to unmute yourself. We have two people that have indicated they'd like to speak on the annexation and plan of service for Twin Eagles Phase 15. The first up, we have Victoria. Victoria, your line has been unmuted. And right behind Victoria, we have Michelle.
Hello?
Hello, Victoria.
How are you this evening?
Fantastic. If you could state your name and your address and any comments you have related to the annexation and plan of service for Twin Eagles.
Okay, Victoria Hagan, 599 Douglas Lane, Gallatin. I have been following this since last year when it became, came to the Planning Commission last year. I believe it was April of some time when they just wanted to put in the road and annex a small section. And you guys had turned it down at that point unanimously. We had sent in a petition. I believe we had just under 100 signatures of every of everyone that lived on this road and in this area. We're very concerned about the safety of the road. It's got two ninety-degree turns, and it also has two seventy-degree turns. We understand it is eighteen feet wide. I did read the letter that Judy had sent in, and it states the planning commission that Douglas Lane currently has an eighteen-foot roadbed, which I think was her words on that letter, is sufficient on the traffic study that was sent. My concern is, a traffic study was done, I believe it was March of twenty twenty, the end of March of twenty twenty, the first part of April twenty twenty. That was the height of the COVID pandemic going on. Myself, I'm a bus driver here in Sumner County, and I travel Douglas Lane four times a day, a minimum, going back and forth to work. And when that study was done, it wasn't, it couldn't be accurate. There were too many people working from home. I would really like to see or know the date of that. I really think it needs to be redone. And please take a look at the letter that is enclosed in your package from Judy Harden, who's the road superintendent. And it was to a Ms. Pennington, who, I'm not sure who that is. I was trying to find that out today, but I was unable to. I just wanted you to know that it, this is a, this is a country road. He was turned down unanimously through the planning department last year. I don't know what they're going to do this year. And now I'm hearing that he wants to do a five-foot setback instead of a ten-foot setback, which that just gives him more room to plan, put more homes, which would be more traffic than what we should have. I appreciate y'all looking at it and coming to a good conclusion here for us out here in the country.
Thank you, Ms. Hagan. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak, Josh?
Michelle, your line's been unmuted.
Thank you, Josh. This is Michelle Juvance, thirteen thirty-five Long Hollow Pike. And just like Victoria was saying, this came through back in April, and it was deferred a couple of times at city council. It was very controversial. Lots of comments were made. Speaking about the annexation, we don't need to annex more land at this time in Gallatin at the edges of our city. The plan of service for this states that the existing fire departments are farther than the four-minute recommended response time and that another fire station is recommended to be built to service this development. And we can't afford to build and staff another fire station right now. We need to take care of our existing firemen. Before we start annexing anything else, we just, we need to just let things kind of like fill in within the already annexed city borders. I really fear tax increases for us citizens going forward with just the amount of growth that we are seeing. I don't think we need to annex any more. I do have a suggestion that I think would be a really good compromise for the developer and also would make the, the people who are living in the county right there on that, that narrow road would also be happy. We don't have enough large estate lots of one to five acres being developed right now in Gallatin, and that's something that's in high demand. I, the plan Gallatin survey that was done, the results of that, when they asked people to say what they wanted more of or less of, and they significantly, significantly wanted more of large estate style lots. And that's not something that we're having, that we're not seeing being developed right now in Gallatin. And I think that, that that would be something that would be a very successful and high-demand sort of community if the developer just did it in the county, let the county take care of developing it and put it on a county road with large estate lots. And I think that he would not lose any money at all because this is something that is in high demand and is not available, and people want it. So that's my opinion, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michelle. At this time, we have Brad Taylor, who's raised his hand, indicating he'd like to speak. Brad, your line has been unmuted. Brad Taylor, your line has been unmuted.
Hi, Brad Taylor, five six five Douglas Lane. As everyone has already mentioned, this is a small country road that is already dangerous. We know that the annexation of this land is going to add a lot of traffic under this road that this road cannot handle. I've got a twelve-year-old son. He walks this road to go to friends' houses. We have a lot of family that comes out here, and they're almost scared to drive this road already because of the ninety-degree turns. My daughter was in a head-on collision on this road because it is, it has a lot of blind curves and is very dangerous. And I feel like that doing this change would do a very big disservice to our entire community. I feel like that this, this construction project that is going on has been misplanned, and they're trying to look for a way out to get the proper entrance and exit out of their neighborhood, and this is their only option. And I'm asking you to vote no to keep our community safe and keep our community what we all love it to be and why we moved here. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. So again, folks, this is for the annexation only. The next agenda item, which is item fourteen, we'll talk more about the plan of service. But if you still would like to speak, we have Julie Vero, and right after Julie will be Chris. So Julie, your line's been unmuted. While we wait for Julie, Chris, if you wanted to go ahead?
Sure. My name's Chris Osborne. I'm at six twenty Douglas Lane. And I also have to agree with the other comments about how dangerous this road can be. For example, I have a dually, and anytime I even go down this road, doesn't matter about the other size of the car, I have to pull over to the side so the car can pass safely. We have no sidewalks on this street, so no one can walk down the street safely. And especially at night, like you're a jogger or you're a young mom, you want to walk. You cannot do that. I think it's very poor planning and not what the original residents down Douglas Lane were looking for when we moved here and bought property here. I think it's very bad planning for the council to approve something like this. And again, to only support a developer to get out of a tight situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Julie, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Julie Vero, six one four Douglas Lane. And I guess the thing that I wanted to say is we have, this community is pretty united in being against this. And we have come before this committee or commission several times, saying the same thing over and over again. And so I'm, I'm not sure, I guess I want to make sure you all are still remembering all of that, that, that we all, we have concerns about the safety of our road, and there wasn't a very good way to change that the last time this was up for discussion. So I'm not really clear what has changed. It almost sounds like the proposal has gotten worse in terms of how it would impact traffic on Douglas Lane. So I think the whole community around here is very opposed to this. And I'm just restating that.
Thank you, Julie. If there's anyone else that would like to speak on this item, which is item thirteen, an annexation and plan of service for Twin Eagles Phase Fifteen, please indicate so by raising your hand at the, using the button at the bottom of the screen or hitting star nine on your telephone. We have Anthony. I'm going to stick with Anthony. And Victoria, you are next up.
Hello, my name's Anthony Panessa. I live at six thirty Douglas Lane. I really don't have anything to add other than I stand with the rest of the community against it for all the reasons that have been stated so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Victoria?
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is actually Jack Agan, her husband.
Okay.
Five nine nine Douglas Lane. One thing I wanted to mention, I mean, development is one thing, but this is totally out of character for this area. Every one of these houses out here is an estate home, five acres minimum. Several of them have much more than that. And now, right in the middle of our little country road, you're going to build a development and change the entire character of the neighborhood. We just, we're all against it. You've got the petition in your hand, and I hope the heck you vote no on it.
I don't think they got petition. We had sent in the petition last year, and I'm sure it's not in your packet for this year.
But there's, it was over, over seventy signatures against it. Everybody on the road that was on the road or lives around here wanted to sign it. There was one person that abstained to it, and that's the person that sold the land to the developer. At any rate, we're all against it. We hope you vote no.
Thank you. Again, folks, this is for the annexation and plan of service. The design, the subdivision and the number of lots can be discussed at item fourteen. We have A. Dyer. Your line has been opened?
Yes, this is Andy Dyer at six hundred Douglas Lane. I would just like to state that we are with our neighbors in, in opposing this annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Victoria. Is there someone else with you? If you hit your, there we go.
No, there's, there's no one else with me. That was it, myself and my husband.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is the last call for item thirteen, annexation and plan of service for Twin Eagles. Mr. Chairman, no one else besides the applicant has indicated that they'd like to speak on this item.
All right. Thank you, Josh. And so we went through several on the, several people spoke. I can't remember, did we give the applicant an opportunity to speak representing this property?
We have not.
My mistake. I'm so sorry. If we have a representative for the applicant for item thirteen, please, please state your name and accept my apology.
Chairman Perrier, this is Andy Leith with Greenland Design. And your apologies are certainly accepted, but if that's all right. I actually prefer to hear the community's concerns before. That way I can hopefully address or alleviate some of those. With the way that we are going tonight, would you just like me to focus on the annexation right now or speak to lots of the things that were brought up with the public comment?
Andy, I just wanted to make sure that you got a chance to speak. Would you, I have been asked to make sure that I do the public comments separately for the separate items. Would you like to hear the public comments under, potentially under fourteen, the rezoning, and then speak, or would you like to speak now?
I'm agreeable to that if that pleases the body.
Okay, we'll table the information from the applicant momentarily. And if everyone's in agreement with that, I will table item thirteen, move to item fourteen, and open up the public comment for the item number fourteen, which is the rezoning with a preliminary master development plan. Josh, do we have anybody who wishes to speak on that?
If you would like to speak on this agenda item, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen or hit star nine on your telephone. Again, this is for the item fourteen, the preliminary master development plan and rezoning for Twin Eagles Phase Fifteen. Victoria, your line is open. And we just ask if you've spoken already. We have heard your comments. You're welcome to speak again. But for the sake of hopefully getting a dinner tonight, we, we ask you to keep your comments brief.
Okay, my only concern is the fact that they're going to the master plan. They want to put one hundred and seventy-one single-family homes on fifty-nine acres. That doesn't leave a whole lot of room for a greenway, for anybody to do anything or for, you know, a dog park, a regular park, any other kind of park. And also, that five-foot setback bothers me as opposed to it being this ten-foot setback that just gives them a reason to add more homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. We have the initials J M W. And then right behind him, we have Anthony.
Let me, I'm going to need to ask Vice Chair Harris to take over the meeting for a moment.
Certainly, sir. Go ahead, Josh.
We have the initials J M W. Your line's open?
Hi, this is Jennifer Willingham at five seven six Douglas Lane. And the only thing I wanted to add here is just echoing Victoria's comments. But also, I wanted to say a blanket statement that progress for one shouldn't negate progress for everyone. And it seems like here, this issue keeps coming up that the developer really isn't listening to the community's concerns. And it is difficult for residents of this area to understand why we keep having to come back to this forum again and again when we keep sort of railing against same issues. So I would just say that there are alternatives to developing this property. Would echo that this should never have gotten to this point, that this body comprised of different members, I totally understand, before your time, should have handled this differently. And now we find ourselves trying to kick the can down the road, albeit a very curvy road yet again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anthony, your line is on, your line is open?
Good evening. It's Anthony Lee from two eight seven Walbrook Drive in Twin Eagles. Concern mostly about the setback and the number of homes, the lots being considerably smaller than the lots that exist in Twin Eagles now. There's already about four hundred or some homes in this neighborhood, and the main entrance, Wildcat Run, is essentially overwhelmed. So more homes are just going to add more traffic to that. I do understand that Douglas Lane exit is, is a good thing for us because it gives us a way out in case there is some emergency or some blockage towards the front of our neighborhood. But I'm just concerned about the homes being so close together, yards being smaller, you know, yard lines. If you just take a look at the plot that's existing right there, he has an extra home in, in each, you know, in those rows on the, on the, on the, on this plot. So I'm just concerned about the setbacks that you guys are going to let him have so that he can put more houses in here. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. We have Andrea Binkley. Andrea, your line is open?
Hey there. This is Andrea Binkley at six thirty-eight Douglas Lane. I know that we've gone through this conversation so many times at this point, so I'm not going to try and rehash it all. I just ask you to really consider the things that we've already discussed about the safety and about what's best for the community. Twin Eagles knew when they were developing it, did one main entrance for that amount of housing, wasn't going to cut it. And yet, here we are. So it's not safe for anybody. It's not a good thing. And I just ask you to please consider that when you make your votes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Again, Again, if you'd like to speak on this item, item 14, a rezoning and preliminary master development plan for Twin Eagles Phase 15, please indicate so by raising your hand, using the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen, or hitting star nine on your telephone. Mr. Vice Chair, at this time, no one has indicated that, no one else has indicated that they would like to speak on this item. Item 14, Twin Eagles Phase 15, rezoning with preliminary master development plan.
All right, thank you, Josh. At this time, we'll close the public comment for item 14. And we'll circle back to the representative for the owner, Mr. Leaf.
Okay, yes, thank you. I've been trying to take notes as each person spoke to try to address their concerns with the subdivision. And they also interject maybe a little history about the subdivision. So I, Twin Eagles has been an ongoing project since about 2003-ish in there. And it started with the phases one through four. Sometime around 2005, maybe even before that, 2003 area. The 90 acres that encompasses phases five through 12, as well as phase 14, that PMDP was done a long time ago. And that PMDP always, since the very beginning, included stub outs to the Duncan property, included stub outs to the Siobhan property, as well as sewer and water and other utilities. Now, I do hear the community saying this was poor planning, but honestly, this has been the plan since the very beginning. We knew that we did not have access to 109. We knew that we did not have access to the north due to the, the conservation easement on the adjoining property. That only left access to the west to Douglas. And so since day one of Twin Eagles, or at least Twin Eagles five through 12, has been to access a second entrance off of Douglas since, since 2005, at least. I've been working on this project since that long. So this is, this is in accordance with the plan. And I do realize that a lot of residents that live on Douglas now did not live there back in 2005. And so that gives a little history as to why we're doing this. We're not really backed into a corner, so to speak. Randy purchased, or Mr. Jones purchased the property to provide that second access to the Twin Eagle subdivision. Because that's been his plan since the beginning of phases five through 12. The traffic study, as one of the residences did, did comment on, and brought up a good point about the COVID situation because our current, our traffic studies that we've been performing recently, not just this one, but they include factors to compensate for the COVID numbers. And this study in particular utilized a study from 2018 on traffic counts in the area to compensate for the low numbers that they might have seen from that traffic count during the pandemic. The county road is 18-foot wide. I personally measured it at various locations. I submitted that to the city, as well as to the engineering department. Maybe you go out there and behind me, and we're a few inches different, but for the most part, that road does average 18-foot, the entire length. Some of the very small numbers are not on Douglas, they're on the Flynn Road that's back there, that the road is under 13-foot in some locations. And we did run this by Judy. And I believe the resident was accurate in her statement that Judy said that the traffic study we provided did not warrant the widening of the road. But I hopefully addressed the COVID concern with the fact that we did take that into consideration with the study. Throughout the county, as we develop properties, I know most people that live in Gallatin area that have moved into Gallatin, maybe are not as familiar with the rest of the county. But I was born and raised in rural Sumner County and experienced the same thing that's, you know, that's happening right here. But county roads are typically, you know, this is, this is actually a really good county road. The fact of going to estate lots and developing this in the county is something that obviously, if this doesn't happen, is an option for us. But still, at the end of the day, I believe that the Sumner County Planning Department, as well as the Gallatin City Planning Department, would want to see that connectivity. So even if we develop in the county, we will have, I'm not going to lie, we would have a few less lots. But we would still be connecting up Twin Eagles phases one through 14 to Douglas Road. I understand, I can sympathize, I can even empathize with the citizens of this community. I've been a lifelong resident of Sumner County. I've certainly watched the landscape change. Being working in Gallatin for the last 15 years, I have seen it materialize before everyone's very eyes. So these are things that we don't necessarily take lightly. As I said, I'm a lifelong resident of Sumner County and intend to continue to be, to be one. And the things that we do impact my livelihood directly. You know, I'm not just here working and working other communities the next day. We realize that development is going to cause headaches, and we try to minimize the impact as much as we can. There are traffic improvements that will be made to Douglas. Douglas from this development, but this development will also provide an alternative to the residents that live out there. You know, they're going to be able to use the Twin Eagle subdivision as well. So I understand the concerns. The reason that we brought this back now is because the owner, Mr. Jones, would like to, if this is going to be voted down by the, the city council, to just have it done once and for all. So they, the community is right, we did not really change the plan. We just incorporated the remaining acreage to have it all voted on at one time. So I'll sit back here and answer any of your questions that you might have.
Thanks, Andy. I actually do have a question. How does the setbacks for the new phases of Twin Eagles compare to the, to the existing parts of Twin Eagles? Are there 10-foot setbacks in those lots, or are they also five-foot?
So I'm glad you brought that up, because I failed to do so. The, the answer is both. The earlier phases of Twin Eagles have the 10-foot setbacks. Some of the latter phases have the five-foot setbacks. The, and I'll go ahead too and address the landscape variances. Those were agreed upon by the seller at the time to have those landscape variances against his properties. And so that's why we're asking for those variances. It was agreed upon when Mr. Jones bought the property from Mr. Duncan. So that's more of the gentleman, that was in the buy and sell agreement. The, the, the variances to the public utility and drainage easements are something that we've been doing, not only in this development, but every development that we have been put before the city within the last maybe two or three years because of the conflicts that the city was having with HVAC units and fences and things of that nature in the public utility and drainage easements. So that
is out of the setbacks was driving part of this. I've seen that be an issue in other neighborhoods as well. So was that, so, so if I understand that correctly, the, with the setback is at five foot, there, you're not necessarily covering it with more house, which is giving you room to get the HVAC and some of those mechanical items in that would not fit inside of the 10-foot setback?
Yes, and, and it's, so, you know, I'm not, not going to try to lie to you guys or try to pull the wool over. I mean, it also allows for a lot size that's more narrow. But at the end of the day, Mr. Jones has a varying product. His lot size ranges from 65-foot wide to 85-foot wide, some 90-foot wide lots. He tries to have a variation so that whatever people want, he's got some product on, on the ground for it. So yes, I mean, part of that is to really provide variation within the subdivision, have some flexibility. We're nowhere near the, the density that would be allowed with the zoning. And there's approximately right now, over 12 acres pushing 13 acres of open space. And we anticipate having, you know, more due to the form water requirements.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant or for staff?
Are we, yeah, I'll, I'll bring up a point, Mr. Harris. The, the issue of Douglas Lane still concerns me. I just don't think that the road can handle the amount of traffic. And I understand that the developer can't expand out, they can't do another phase unless they have another outlet. They were told when they started the previous phase, you can't go another phase until you have a second ingress, egress into the development. I have a question for Andy. Was phase 10 and 11 of Twin Eagles, was that, I don't know how old that is. Was that, were those phases completed after the plans for Hatton Track were finalized?
Actually, Chairman, I know that we went back and revised phases 11 and 12 for Hatton Track. As far as the completion date, if you could tell me when Hatton Track was finalized, I could probably help with that.
I'm not sure either. The reason I ask the question is I don't want to make an assertion that's, that's not true, but I'm just going by my memory, is that this whole issue of not having another outlet, Randy Jones had an opportunity to tie into this Hatton Track connection right there. It wasn't necessarily the opportunity he wanted. And I can assure you that the folks on Douglas Lane wouldn't have liked it either, but there was a, a study by T-Doc to do a road connection all the way from Hatton Track going all the way around and over to tie into 386. But there was an opportunity to tie in and get connection right there to 109 at that time, and it was declined. It was fault by everybody in that corridor over there. So this issue of being boxed in is a little bit self-imposed, to the best of my memory. I'm opposed to extending out towards Douglas Lane because I feel like it's going to dump a lot of traffic onto a road that can't handle it. And the way I read that letter from the road superintendent, I don't know, I just, I read it different. It sounds to me like she's saying the county has no plans to widen it because it serves, it serves its purpose for what it's performing now. I didn't see it as a response to, it would serve the purpose of handling the additional traffic from a whole neighborhood being added on. Maybe I read it wrong. That's all I had to comment. Oh, I'm sorry, I guess I should, I'm back, I should take over. If you're ready, Mr. Harris.
Go ahead. I guess a question for, for, for Andy. So it, you know, assuming this develops in the county, you're saying the connection to Douglas Lane is happening one way or the other? Even if you guys developed it in the county, you feel?
I mean, if we have to develop it in the county, I guess there's the potential of connecting up to city streets and, but you still have the same problem that you have right now that Bill would like to speak to the fact that I know planning and engineering have been wanting a second entrance, not just with this phase. They want one regardless. So this, I know that, I think that planning and engineering are really digging in on this one and saying you're not going to get any more till you get a second entrance. But they've been wanting a second entrance for, for a little while now. So I guess it would necessarily, I guess it would be possible to connect up to Gallatin City Streets with the county development and not connect Douglas. But I don't think either planning department would want that.
Oh, any other discussion?
Are we still on public comment? No? Yes?
Matt, help me out, I stepped away.
Oh, no, no, we closed public comment, we were just
But we're on number 14. Or are we, are we commenting on both right now?
I, I think we were commenting on both. We need to, we need to vote individually on 13 and 14.
Well, then, I would like to say, I don't see any point, in my opinion, on annexing to allow a great deal more homes to be built in a subdivision that only has one entrance or exit other than Douglas Lane, which I'm not in favor of because I've driven it. I've spoken with Judy Hart, and she does, I think that her intent was, as, as Chairman Perrier said, she has said that there will no, there's not, it's not possible to widen it, even though it would have been needed. There's, not only is it narrow with, without shoulders in a lot of places, but there are those 90-degree curves that are, that are very dangerous, I believe. Our fire chief has said that that road would be difficult for their emergency equipment to get through. And I don't think that that road is safe at all to open up to all the hundreds of homeowners that live in that subdivision. So I, I just, I don't see any point really in, in annexing or in voting to further number 14.
I believe, thank you, Ms. Love. I think at this point, we, we don't have a motion or a second on the floor for either one, do we?
No, we do not.
Okay, well then, I will go to item 13, I'll entertain a motion if somebody wishes to make one.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve so we can have the discussion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Harris. Do I hear a second? Going once, going twice. All right. Motion dies for lack of second. The alternative would be if somebody wishes to make a motion in the negative, a motion to deny.
I'll make a motion to deny.
We have a motion by Mrs. Hibler to deny the annexation request on item 13. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mrs. Love. Any discussion on that, the motion, just restated is, in the negative, is to deny the annexation request, the annexation and plan of service request? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. O'Gan.
You know, one of the, one of the speakers talked about 400-plus homes in there. It is so, it is a bad idea to not give more than one avenue of entrance and egress out of that huge subdivision. And some of the comments talked about maybe estate-type homes for a certain number of acres that join Douglas Lane. I mean, those are neighbors of mine. And it is a really bad idea to not have any access to, to that subdivision from another location. So I, I don't know if this is directed directly at Andy Leath or the, the developer, but they need to come up with a compromise that would satisfy the community to some extent and allow us to approve annexation because it's too late to not do anything. That's my comment.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think my only other comments on this would be, I, you know, I'm not a big fan of how Douglas Lane, you know, the size of the road. It's, it's a standard county road. You know, I, I could drive, I drove through there yesterday and looked at all of it. And I, my personal opinion is the majority of the traffic is going to continue to exit through Twin Eagles and back out to Highway 25. From, my concern is if, if the city doesn't annex it and have the opportunity to control the development, it's going to get developed in the county. And I still think we're going to see ultimately a road connecting to Douglas Lane and back into Twin Eagles, just without the city. And I still think we're going to see ultimately a road connecting to Douglas Lane and back into Twin Eagles, just without the cities. You know, with, but with, but the city not having the ability to, to weigh in and, and have some control over it. So that's my other comment.
And to add to that, um, I have zero confidence in the county at this point. They didn't have a planner forever.
Yeah.
They're way behind the eight ball on this one. Or anything like it.
And that's, and that's, and that's my, that's my biggest concern. I, I, I think ultimately there's going to be a connection to Douglas Lane to Twin Eagles regardless. You know, if it's developed in the county, we're going to lose the ability to can, to have the control over how, how it gets developed. Not, I'm not saying I like the, the road and, and put the traffic on it. My, my concern is I, my suspicion is it's happening regardless.
Any other discussion on the motion that's before us? Well, seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. And let me just clarify that the motion currently on the floor is in the negative. Uh, it is a motion to deny the request for annexation and plan of service, item 13. So if you vote in I'm not altogether sure if you're voting to approve it, uh, a, a negative, double negative, but I know that if you vote yes, you're turning it down. Okay. Well, then I will call for the vote. Mary Ann, can you take a roll call vote? All those that favor in, or vote in favor of denying the request for annexation and plan of service indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Ms. Hibler?
No.
Okay, so you've got three, yes, and four.
Hold on.
Alexander needs to weigh in and explain what just happened.
Okay.
Can I do that?
Ms. Hibler, you made the motion.
Mm-hmm.
Aye, but then you voted to approve.
Right. And I can't do that. I have to.
Yeah, if you're, you've made the motion, so your motion to be in a positive, I'm not telling you what to do, but your motion to deny.
She can.
Motion, is that what you're doing?
Somebody else said something. I couldn't hear them. I could only.
That's not out of order at all for her to vote no and have made the motion.
That's what I was going to ask if that, if I can do that.
No, you can't, you can't make a motion and then vote against your own motion. You can second a motion and vote against it, but you can't make a motion and then vote against yourself.
Okay. So can, how do we?
We'll call again. Should I do it again?
Or withdraw your motion.
Well, yeah, tha- thank you, Dr. Organe. I think that was you. I'm not sure. Okay.
Is it voted on?
Can't withdraw your motion until Mrs. Love withdraws her second.
Yeah, two.
Well, I'll withdraw it. I'm not sure what we're going to do next, though.
No, cannot. Can I ask a quick? Okay, I'm, I'm new. I, I. Okay, so when I made the motion, it was to get on the floor after the other one was denied, or was it, it died. So then I made the motion to get the second part started, and then we had a discussion. Then that's when I made up my mind of what to do. So that's how I voted. So what do we need to do?
Well, I think that Ms. Alexander can correct me if I'm wrong, but if I understand Robert's rules, um, you're not supposed to make a motion unless you intend to vote on it, uh, vote in favor of. You're the sponsor of the motion, so you're not supposed to vote against the motion that you sponsored. You can, however, second a motion for a purpose of discussion and then vote against something you seconded. Uh, I hope I'm correct on that. That's my understanding.
And this is Latasha Alexander, Staff Attorney, and procedurally, yes, that's how Robert rules of order should work. So you should not make a motion that you do not intend on voting in the affirmative on.
Okay. Okay. So for clarification, I intended to, but after discussion, I changed my mind. So I've learned two things today. Thank you all very much and for teaching and learning. Um, so what do we need to do now?
Well, Mrs. Love has withdrawn her second, so you can withdraw your motion if you'd like, and we'll start all over.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
All right. Then, um, we're a little bit of an impasse. I'll, I'll entertain a motion from someone.
I, I think for a future reference, somebody needs to make clarification because I think the maker of a motion can do what they want. And the maker of a motion can choose to withdraw it without the second, having to withdraw their second. But now we're past that.
Robert's rules are not law. They're just a process to keep a moving, uh, meeting moving along, which, um, doesn't seem to be working almost, but.
To keep it moving along, I will make a motion to approve item 13 annexation of, of a Twin Eagles fitting.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Then the motion dies for a lack of second, and I, I have no choice. The chairman has said that the planning commission could not take action on the item.
Well, our attorney says we better not do that because then that means it's approved.
Well, this, uh, Dr. Organe, this is an annexation and plan of service which goes to city council. Uh, I will work with Latasha in her office, uh, tomorrow while we're prepping the agenda items for city council. And to make it clear that the planning commission could not provide a recommendation for this item.
I have a, I have a question.
Certainly, Ms. Hibler.
Okay, because Mr. Harris made a motion. Could I second it to get the vote to discussion and to get a, to get the motion to second and then discussion and then a vote? Is that correct?
Yes, I asked for a second, but nobody spoke up.
I was making sure that I was correct. I apologize.
So, purpose of you all doing your job as a recommending body to the council. Can we please revisit this item for a potential vote?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander, Staff Attorney.
I, well, I'll, I'll, I'll make the third attempt at a motion to approve item 13 annexation and plan of service for Twin Eagle Phase 15, if anyone wants.
And we have a second by Mrs. Hibler. Is that correct? Any discussion on the item? All right.
Already discussed, what I felt.
And I, I, I won't restate it. Does anyone else want to weigh in? Uh, I, I put you on the spot, but Mr. Wilson or Mr. Strather? Do you have any comments on this?
No, no comment. My concern primarily is for the safety. I don't think that the road can accommodate the excess traffic. Secondly, even with a, a, a second egress or egress, I still, uh, in my mind, uh, I'm concerned about the traffic flow and the probability of injuries and overloading the road, roadway.
I agree, and we're just talking about adding more to the, to the problem.
It would be up to the city to alleviate that by enlarging the road, and I know that means expense.
Do you mean Douglas Road, Douglas Lane?
That's right.
Because that's.
It's a county road.
And they've already said it's not able to be widened.
Of course, it can be widened. It's just very expensive to do in moving all those big trees, and I know nobody wants to do that.
But Dr. Organe, the, my understanding, the, the reason Douglas Lane cannot be widened is because there is no, there is no, excuse me, thunderstorm, there is no county on a property, the edge of the road. There is no, there's no shoulder because the county doesn't own the properties. They would have to, to acquire the right-of-way before they could expand it from the adjacent property owners. I think it's very difficult.
I'll also just say, I just measured the distance. Uh, I certainly don't want the expense of improving Douglas Lane to fall on the city if we create a problem. That's 1,500 yards of, uh, road. That's a multi, multi-million dollar, uh, improvement, that road, so. Anyhow, uh, we have a motion on the floor in favor of, uh, approving the annexation and plan of service. And that motion was made by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mrs. Hibler. Any further discussion? Then I will call for, one final time, I'll call for the vote. And if we can't come to a vote on this, then I'm going to make a motion to defer. So on item number 13, uh, Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote? If you vote aye or you? No.
No? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's raining so hard here. I can barely hear you. Did you say no?
No.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Councilwoman Love?
No.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Strather?
No.
Ms. Hibler?
Yes.
So you have three ayes and four noes. It fails.
Okay, motion failed. Um, item number 15, uh, is the rezoning with a preliminary master development plan. Uh, we have voted no on the annexation, um, but I still need to take them make a motion.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve item 14.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Um, I'll ask again. I know it's raining really hard. Do I hear a second from Mr. Harris's motion? We have a second by Mrs. Hibler. So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Harris to approve, uh, the rezoning with a preliminary master development plan, seconded by Mrs. Hibler. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, if you'll take a roll call vote, let me remind you that the, uh, the motion on the floor is to approve the rezoning preliminary master development plan. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve it. If you vote no, you're voting, uh, to deny it. Mary Ann?
Councilwoman Love?
No.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Strather?
No.
Ms. Hibler?
No.
Okay, so it fails two to five.
Thank you. I'm motion or, uh, requesting, uh, then that, that was item 13 and 14. We're, um, we're about two hours and 45 minutes in. Does anyone need a break? Before we move on to, I will mention five, items 15, 16, and 17 have been deferred at the request of the applicant. So we would be ready for item number 18. Looks like we still have about five items to go. Does anyone need a break?
Chair Perrier, five minutes would be welcome and maybe give a chance for these thunderstorms to pass so I can actually hear you.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Okay, we'll recess for, uh, five minutes.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I am here. Um, we're just having a quick staff powwow in the hallway. Our internet's kind of acting a little funky. So, uh, if, if we lose internet, we will lo- lose hosting privileges. Uh, and then at that point, if that happens, then the meeting is adjourned. And we'd have to find an alternative date and advertise for the remainder of the items.
Okay, are we stable enough to continue with item 18 right now?
We believe so. Uh, the lightning and the thunder outside might prove us wrong later, but at the moment, we are, we can power through, we can get through the rest of this agenda.
Very good. I'll kick it into another gear. Um, uh, item number 18 is resolution number 2021-015624 Davis Drive. The minor subdivision flat. Um, who's handling that item?
Uh, I am handling that item, Mr. Chairman. This is for commercially zoned properties and two master development plants. The current owner of both of those is looking to, uh, combine those four lots into three lots. Next slide, please. Jen, uh, Jillian, sorry, Jennifer's gone home for the day. They're combining four lots into three lots, uh, and as a condition of approval, we've asked them to provide an updated, uh, master development plan sheet that showcases the adjustment in the boundary lines between, uh, this parcel on the corner of Davis Drive and Nashville Pike and the remainder of the, uh, two other parcels. And I believe the applicant was on the line earlier. Uh, if you are representing this item, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen, and we will call on you. Uh, all right, I have somebody. Oh, Andy. Hi, Andy.
Hello. Yes, I am here and will entertain any of your questions.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, staff recommends this approval of this item.
Okay. I know that when staff, when I review this with staff, this is really a procedural thing, um, and, uh, staff is in favor of it. So I, I can just tell you that I'm, I'm in favor of it.
I, I don't have any concerns on this at all, so.
Any discussion, or I, I will ask for a motion to be placed on the floor so that we can have discussion. Uh, I will make a motion to approve number, item, item number 18.
Second.
With a second by Mr. Harris. Discussion?
No, no problem here.
Yeah, it's just procedural. Um, then I will call for the vote. Mary Ann, if you'll, uh, take a roll call vote, all in favor of approval of item number 18? Uh, indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Strather?
Aye.
Ms. Hibler?
Aye.
Nonsense seven zero.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number 19, which is resolution number 2021-007. Uh, the Goat Farm. It's rezoning with a preliminary master development plan. This item will include a public comment. Uh, first we'll hear from staff. Which staff member is presenting this item?
Uh, Jillian Ogden, staff planner.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jillian.
The Goat Farm is a proposed mixed-use development located on Nashville Pike, east of Chute's Lane, adjacent to Highway 386 overpass. The development will include the proposed Sumner County Ice Center. This project is also a bit more complex. It straddles the city limits boundary as we have discussed. So on the diagram above, you see Nashville Pike, uh, running through the, through the map. Uh, the hatched area is what is within city limits, and the yellow area that is, uh, filled in is the part of the development that is in the county. Um, so please keep that in mind as we discuss this item. Um, as it will, uh, involve, uh, other entities besides just the city of Gallatin. Um, our portion is the northern portion. Sumner County will review the southern portion. Again, this will not, the southern portion will not be reviewed by the city of Gallatin because it is not in our jurisdiction. Uh, because it is not in our urban growth boundary, so it cannot be annexed into the city at this time. Um, it also borders the city of Hendersonville, so there's a lot going on in this part of town. As it will involve other entities besides just the city of Gallatin. Our portion is the northern portion. Sumner County will review the southern portion. Again, this will not, the southern portion will not be reviewed by the city of Gallatin because it is not in our jurisdiction, because it is not in our urban growth boundary. So it cannot be annexed into the city at this time. It also borders the city of Hendersonville. So there's a lot going on in this part of town. The applicant proposes to rezone five point three nine acres to MRO for the residential portion of the, of the development and a little over twenty-six acres to PGC for the commercial portion of the development. And that is the portion with, these are the portions within the city of Gallatin. This project will include a variety of retail and restaurant parcels, an entertainment plaza with a variety of activities, a hotel, and a multifamily residential complex. These uses will support the proposed ice center and recreational facilities, which are located in the Sumner County portion of the development. This PMDP request does include exceptions, most notably for the height of the complex, the multifamily complex, and for the hotel, which is right along the, the city boundary. This item does require a public comment and this request will go on to City Council for review following a planning commission recommendation. The applicant asked to speak through a couple slides this evening, so I'm going to let them elaborate on the project itself.
Thank you, Jillian. If we have a representative for that, please state your name and proceed with the presentation.
Hi, this is Kevin Kane with Stratus Development and I'm here to just kind of introduce our project and, and what we're trying to achieve in this particular area. And then I'm going to hand it off to John Sexton with Loos Design, who's going to go through some of the particulars of the, the design and layout and everything to that. But, you know, as, as we've spoken about previously in, in conversations with staff, what we were truly trying to accomplish here was create an area where folks throughout Sumner County could congregate and also, you know, share in some different amenities that we haven't had previously. As Jillian mentioned, we are proposing an ice facility on the county property to the south and that serves to be the main attractor to the location specifically, but we are looking to augment that with restaurants and retail, some, you know, MRO zoning for residential units on the northeast side of the property in Gallatin, as well as the hotel. And we're looking to really drive energy to this area and some, some new life in an area that's been underdeveloped historically. This particular parcel has been an important parcel in terms of the connectivity between all of the different parts of the county and specifically Henderson and Gallatin. And to get to this point, it's been a great conversation with Gallatin, Hendersonville, and the county to decide, you know, what are some uses that we would propose. And so I look forward to hearing your comments. I'm going to pass it off to John and let him go through the presentation and then I'll stick around for any other comments.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. So just to let everyone know, the vision for the Goat Farm is really to create a family-oriented development and to bring people together through live, eat, work, and play. The vision's always been to create a regional destination that has a vibrant, energetic, and dynamic space for the residents of Sumner County, but also to create a memorable space for, you know, traveling guests to come back year after year. You know, the Goat Farm will be the spot for athletic competition, recreation, hospitality, and commerce, but most of all, it's, it's going to create the tax base for, increase the tax base for both Gallatin and Sumner County. You know, our hope is that residents and travelers will, will come to the Goat Farm and stay at the hotel. And then, you know, they will eat at the restaurant and they will shop on, on site and then they will go to the, the ice rinks to, you know, enjoy, you know, activities throughout the day and then come back to the hotel. So our, what we want to do is keep people on property, not to say that they won't visit, you know, surrounding amenities, but keep people on property to really enjoy, you know, the family atmosphere that we're trying to, you know, try to create. You know, it's always been the owner's vision and top priority to work with planning from both municipalities, with engineering, with the fire marshals, but to really take into account everybody's comments and concerns, to make sure that this is an asset for the, for, for Gallatin and the county of Sumner County. So Jillian, can you go to the next slide? So again, you know, to reiterate, you know, the vision is to really create a family-oriented development, to bring the people together to live, eat, work, and play. Jillian, next slide. As everybody knows, it is located at the intersection of Chute Lane and Nashville Pike. It's approximately just dead center between Gallatin and Hendersonville. So, you know, it serves a wide variety, especially located along the main travel corridors of Nashville Pike. And it also is, you know, located about a mile, less than a mile, to Veterans Parkway. So, you know, access to this site is, is really a, a great asset and allow, you know, the most amount of people to come into it. It's close to Old Hickory Lake as well. And, you know, we're, we're really trying to also connect pedestrian circulation to the surrounding developments. Next slide. So as you can see, the existing land use is on the left-hand side and the proposed is on the right. We have R twenty up on the north side of Gallatin to where Sumner County is the rural residential as well. We've got the MU off to the right-hand side. And if you look over to the right, about nineteen acres of that is going to be to PCG and I think it's about five is going to be going to MRO as well. Next slide. Also, we're trying to stick with the community character in this area. It's designated as commercial core. So we're really trying to, you know, take advantage of what is there now and accentuate some of the characteristics within our parcel. You can see that the Goat Farm outline down there to the lower left, how that community core comes into that. We're really trying to create a healthy mix of uses, as Kevin said, you know, with residential, hospitality, retail, and dining. And we're also, you know, this property also plays a really important role in connecting adjacent uses into this area to create a vibrant and, you know, really accentuate the pedestrian transportation between all the adjacent areas and within our development. Next slide. So here is the master plan that you see. I'll go into detail here more in a second, but you can see the dashed white line, that does designate the Gallatin area from the Sumner County area. Up above, again, it's going to be the PCG designation with the out parcels along Nashville Pike. And we have that entertainment core that we spoke about, again, right where your cursor is, with the hotel along that, that property line. And then we have the MRO, the multifamily residential over there. We're still in discussions with everyone about, you know, if that's going to be a condo or an apartment. So we are still trying to determine how that is actually going to come together. Next slide, please. So this is the PCG designation with the out parcels along Nashville Pike. We've heard a lot from adjacent community members and within different stakeholders about how we really need to make sure that we pay attention to the buffers along Nashville Pike and also some of the adjacent uses. What we're planning, we're proposing is to create more of a twenty-five foot buffer along Nashville Pike to, you know, incorporate some of those stone walls and some more of the birmingham to allow, to, to make sure that we're buffering some of that parking that we're proposing along Nashville Pike and bring some of those buildings closer in to that, that main core that we are proposing. This is to, to really accentuate that, that pedestrian-friendly environment. Know that there's going to be a lot of, you know, attention given to this, this property. So we want to make sure that it's really focused on, you know, slowing down the traffic and, you know, creating those vibrant streetscapes that, you know, everybody's looking for in, you know, developments like this. Jillian, next slide, please. So this is the entertainment corridor that we're, we're calling. It's that block of buildings right here. You know, now again, when, when we say entertainment corridor, it's more of the family-focused activity area with movie nights on the lawns. We do plan on having this space activated pretty much throughout the year and we want to create a vibrant atmosphere. So when we do have those traveling families that do come into town, again, it's, it's creating an atmosphere where they come into town, they stay at the hotel, they're able to get, you know, food during the day and at night and in the mornings. And, you know, it's providing other program elements to really bring activity and energy to this spot. You know, again, it could be family, you know, game nights, yoga is on Saturday mornings, but we're really trying to make sure that, you know, other than the ice center in Sumner County, we create a, an optional area for, you know, families to really enjoy and it, it really creates an asset within Sumner County. Next slide, please. And again, this is the, the PCG, the hospitality component. Again, it's, it's, it's bringing elements within this, this, this neighborhood or this development to keep people on property, to allow them to really experience that, that sports active component that we're trying to create. Next slide, please. The MRO district, this is the multifamily that we were speaking about. Again, it's, it's trying to activate this space. We, we really want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're creating a multifunction, multi-faceted development to keep, you know, this space energetic and lively throughout the year. So bringing, you know, these multifamily units here onto this property would, would be a huge asset to the development. Next slide, please. And again, in Sumner County, I know we're, this is not the focus of the meeting, but again, that big white box is, would be the, the, the Sumner County Ice Center. So really trying to activate this space. This would be kind of the, the primary focus of everybody coming to the development, but, you know, also interjecting some of those other components such as the hotel and, you know, the shopping and residential component, really make this development successful. Next slide, please. And again, some of the character images for that hotel, or the, the ice center. One of the unique components of this master plan is, you know, we've got plus or minus forty percent open space and that's due to some of the waters, the state streams that are coming in. But within Gallatin, we've got plus or minus fourteen percent open space right there along Chute Lane. And in Sumner County, we're hitting about twenty-eight percent. So it's, it's really beneficial to, you know, try to be as environmentally sensitive to this space as we possibly can. And some of the vehicular circulation. There has been a lot of comments on, you know, access points into development and we are still working with plant, planning staffs on both municipalities within Gallatin and Sumner County. Right now, we are proposing two entrances off of Nashville Pike up there at the top, one right there at the roundabout and the other to the right of that. We've got about sixteen hundred feet of frontage. So we're still working with traffic engineers to determine if there is need or warranted for stoplights. But as much as we can, we're trying to provide as many access points into this property as well as being sensitive to surrounding adjacent uses. So again, you know, this is a proposal, but, you know, there are still conversations going on about where these access points happen. Next slide. And again, the pedestrian circulation, really trying to make this a family fun oriented develop and, you know, really highlighting those circulation routes between the adjacent neighborhoods and along Chute Lane, extending that ten-foot corridor that we have all the way up Chute Lane into the vehicular circulation, bringing those buildings closer together and creating a friendly, fun, and safe environment for pedestrians to, you know, transition through all portions of the neighborhood. My next slide. And signage. Some of these signages are, some of these pictures are some of the ideas that we're trying to incorporate into the development. But it's, you know, we've, we've really enjoyed working with staff and all the stakeholders. We've really had a lot of great conversations to drive this development forward and, and be as sensitive and responsive to everybody that we, we've talked to today. So just wanted to say thank you for everybody listening and we'll be glad to take any questions that you have.
All right, thank you. I will, would like to hear from a couple of our city departments if they have input or comments. If engineering, I know that they have one condition of approval. Does engineering have anything they wish to add to this?
No, he did a pretty good job explaining things. Just something that the city engineer is concerned about is just the ride-in, ride-out there at the roundabout that goes to the north and ties into Nashville Pike. And then that secondary entrance between, well, as you go to the east, that, that, that be a full signalized intersection. And, and they've agreed to that. So we're, we're, we're comfortable with this plan.
Thank you. And I just saw Mr. Stewart come online. Chuck, did you wish to add anything?
Yes, sir. I would like to mention to Kevin and to you, Mr. Chairman, that the Gallatin Building Department would be asking our staff attorneys to try to work out a local intergovernmental agreement for building inspections, fire inspections, fire protection for this entire complex here when it, it goes active down here. We have the staff that can handle a project like this where it would put a lot of problems onto the county staff, but I feel like an intergovernmental agreement would work. I've done it before in other places. So we would be asking for that.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I support what Chuck says. There, he's best placed to, to supervise this. I also want to say that, that, that there's been four or five years that have gone into this, trying to create something that is truly an amenity for our community. And as you look at the design and development itself, it, it answers a lot of questions. And, and the, the main thing is it gives our community, our county, our region, not even our county, our region, a, a, an amenity that is sorely needed. You, I'm guessing there are probably thirty people online wanting to, to comment about how important this is to our community that are now getting up at four o'clock in the morning and driving to Antioch, driving to Bellevue, to, or any of all these places, just to have some time on the ice. And this is an incredible amenity to our community. We also have to understand that, that the design, the developers have looked to the city of Gallatin and said, yes, we understand that you need these things in the city. And if you notice, the, the restaurants, the hotels are in the city, which will create revenue for our community. And it's, there's very little negative that can be said about this. So.
Introduce yourself, please.
I'm sorry. James Fenton, Economic Development Director for the city of Gallatin. Thank you, Dr. Organe. There's very little about this development that really doesn't have the best interest in, in, in the community. It has Gallatin in its best interest, but it also has the entire county and the entire region in its best interest. So please, if you have suggestions, concerns, whatever, deliver them. They will be addressed directly, but this is really something that we need to, to look positive at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finn. Before I open it to a public comment, I just want to remind everyone, I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to, to be heard. But I want to remind everyone that, that of this plan, the northern portion of it along Gallatin Road is what we're addressing. I know that the applicant described in detail the shop, the hockey, the ice rink, everything, but I want to make clear that that's not even what we're addressing tonight. So that will come before the county planning and there will be a public hearing on that at that time. So if we could try to focus our comments on the northern section, which includes the restaurants and the apartment complex and the, the other uses up there. At this time, I'll open a public comment. Josh, do we have anyone who would like to speak? And do you have any public comments that need to be read into the record in the form of emails?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do. In advance of this meeting, understanding that it was going to be going late, staff encouraged applicant, or members of the public that would like to speak to submit comments directly to me via email. And I will start going through about half of those. And then we can take a break to give my voice a rest and we can go with some more public comments and then I can finish off the rest. Jillian, I'm going to steal your screen for a second. There is one voicemail that I have to play. I've been instructed by our attorney's office that this should, should be entered into the record. So hopefully this works. If you can, once it starts playing, if you can give me a thumbs down if you cannot hear it.
Mr. King, my name's Kirk Peterson, eight one seven Douglas Bend Road. Can I face the meeting tonight? I would like to go on record that I oppose all, all.
Okay.
It should be louder.
Okay. I can turn that up.
Apartment buildings, additional apartments being built in Gallatin. I also want to go on record that the
Mr. King, we're still not able to understand that.
We could hear earlier before you did whatever you did.
Okay.
You to kind of transcribe that, give us a, can you relay the message?
I cannot transcribe it with the original intent of the voicemail. I did download it and forward it to all of you in your your emails. And I'll see if we can get that, I can get that working shortly. The, hmm, okay. But Jill.
summarize it.
Jillian, if you want to start sharing your screen again, actually, I'm sorry. I've got one more with exhibits. The first there's a, I I'm working with a lot of comments. Okay. So this share screen. So this is a comment from Brandon Forston, F O R T S O N. Please see the attached photos regarding the goat farm development that I believe show a deliberate attempt by the developers, possibly along with GEDA to present a picture showing little to no impact of this development on the existing neighbors to this property. This this data wasn't hard to find. A simple Google map search would have yielded these results to anyone inclined to know the real impact. But in lieu of some basic research done by those who will be voting, I have done this work for you. In the first image titled GEDA Goat Farm imagery, that should be with what is being displayed on the screen right now.
Yeah.
You can see this slide used during many GEDA meetings regarding this development. This slide was from satellite imagery taken in twenty fifteen and seems to show this development impacting nearly nothing, which is not the case. In the second image, it's a there it is. In the second image titled Gallatin Planning Goat Farm Presentation, you can see some development has occurred along the eastern edge of the property. But again, this imagery is very old and from twenty seventeen. We know our city, county, and surrounded areas are growing rapidly. So why this imagery chose why was this imagery chose when much newer imagery is exists and is easily found on Google? It would seem that once again, this is to present the impact of this development as minimally as possible to the surrounding area. Lastly, in the third image titled Goat Farm Current Image Impact Imagery, this is the only one that was submitted with exhibits. So hopefully the other ones will not take quite this long. Lastly, in the third image titled Goat Farm Current Impact Imagery, you can see a more realistic impact this development poses to the development of the east and its most immediate neighbors. While I'm opposed to some aspects of this development, I am enthusiastically in favor of others, but think that the presentation shown to the public thus far and privately shared among those who will vote on this development have been a deliberate attempt to leave out the impact this has on the immediate area. I would like these images shown and kept part of the record to show a more realistic impact this will have on many in the area who support or lack thereof will have an immediate and direct impact on the long-term success of the businesses that chose to locate here. And that was sent from Brandon Fort Fortson.
We can't see the last, anything on your last picture.
I can solve that. I have a a lot of emails for this project. Is the, is what's being displayed now currently a hand-drawn map?
It has hand-drawn home currently built square at the bottom.
Okay, this was the third exhibit that was referred to in Mr. Fortson, Mr. Fortson email. Mr. Fortson's email and sent from him to me showing the homes that have been built in Hunt Club with imagery dated February of twenty twenty. We have an email from Jamie Campbell. Tonight, I will be logged into the Planning Commission meeting for as much of this session as I can. I will be watching from Ford Ice Center Bellevue during the Zoom meeting while my younger son has hockey practice. In the event, public comment on the other item stretches the meeting so that I am not able to speak on behalf of the Goat Farm Project. I submit my message below for your records. Mr. Campbell supports. Thank you for your willingness to step forward and lead our city. I see only bits and pieces of what you do and realize there is much more beyond that. Further, most of our citizens citizens have no clue what all goes into your deliberations and decisions. This letter is to you all collectively. In addition to a more detailed note I sent to council members Love, Hayes, and Mayor Brown. I will print and mail a hard copy of this note to City Hall as well as for council members Camp, Alexander, and Fan as they do not use email. Today, I would like to briefly let you know that I am strongly in favor of the Goat Farm development that will come before you in the next few weeks. Mine is a hockey family and has been since twenty fourteen. Both of my sons, age thirteen, eleven, play on travel hockey teams associated with the National Predators at the existing Ford Ice Centers in Antioch and Bellevue. Despite being in my mid-forties, I have also taken up the sport so I can understand and even more in awe of what our sons can do on the ice. My wife studies hockey inside and out at all levels of play, system, statistics, and development. And we share the responsibility of shuttling the kids to practices and games. This season with practices, games, and private coaching, we are in rinks four nights a week at minimum. Currently, the way everything is set on the calendars, we have left Sumner County daily since January third and will until at least February twentieth to get our kids on the ice. We see the prospects of the Goat Farm are hugely exciting for an occasional break for our family to stay close to home for programming, the opportunity to grow skating programs of all kinds, recreational and competitive hockey and figure skating, casual open skating, curling, etc. The expansion and solidify solidification of high school hockey in Sumner County as more kids have access to the sport here at home. The increased tax revenue for Gallatin from property improvements, hotel night, hamburger taxes, and tapping into a new pool of visitors for Sumner County each year. The improved quality of life with the entertainment and dining options as presented within this master plan. To follow our family's passion, our money and our time was currently be spent in Davidson County. We know that many months will pass as we move from review and approval of plans to groundbreaking ceremony to operational ice rink, restaurants, shops, and hotel. But we are patient and optimistic for this possibility for Sumner County. I ask you to take this opportunity before us and support the Goat Farm development. Please feel free to follow up with me if you have additional questions about our experience and how we see this as a great addition to Gallatin. Respectfully, Jamie Campbell of the Stratford Park Neighborhood here in Gallatin. An email from Jason Givens.
I'm gonna, Josh, I'm gonna have to interrupt you for just a moment.
Yes.
I I know we we wanted to, I'm, I know I'm the one that said in the review, we want to make sure that every comment gets added into the public or every email and everything gets added into the public comment. But I also know that in person, if we were having a public comment, I would limit somebody's input to two minutes. That's what state requires. Sometimes if we don't have very many people speaking, we'll give people three or four minutes. But if we have a lot of letters like that, I don't think we're going to be able to get through all the public comment tonight on this item. And I would
Mr. Chairman.
borrow the item for another. How many items, how many emails do we have like that size?
There are go ahead, Mr. Fenton, while I'm counting.
Mr. Chairman. I am, I have been intimately involved with this process for four years. And I know there are incredible number of people read this. And I'm envisioning that a lot of the people online tonight are also supportive of this. I I know of of thirty to forty people that are online tonight that are in support of this. And what I would like just is that the the Plan Commission accept maybe, and and I'm just offering this for the first time, but the Plan Commission accept someone to can speak on these people's behalf. And that you will allow that everyone can raise their hand and be at thirty or forty people that just raise their hand that are in favor of this. And someone speak with with that that that, gosh, incredible desire for this comment. We don't need to make this be an hour-long conversation, and it can be. But none of us need to be here for an hour. You need to understand that there are incredible number of people that are in favor of this. There are legitimate concerns that need to be addressed. Without a doubt, the folks in Hunt Club, they do have things to say. I'm asking that you allow a spokesman for the folks that are in favor come up and and speak. And maybe a spokesman that have concerns about the development, speak. And just to be respectful, everyone's time.
Well, I'm I we're required to give everybody an opportunity to speak. I just have to limit it to a couple of minutes. I just meant to say that we can't have twenty or thirty of those emails.
Understood, understood.
But I don't know how I would pick the spokesperson and and leave somebody out. So I know that puts you in a difficult position, Josh, but
Maybe he can.
If I can move to public comment and allow people to speak. If Josh, if you could look over those emails and figure out how to highlight out what you need to summarize out of the email and say it's in favor or decline. That's the only thing I know to do, but I need to limit every input to two minutes.
I can take care of that while we open up the public comment for the folks that are still on the line. I've got five people that have raised their hands, six people that have raised their hands. We'll start with Derek Cantrell, and right after him will be Mark Costa and Martin Hoagland.
All right. I was, I didn't write those names down fast enough, but if the first person will proceed, and if you will state your name for the record.
Okay, this is actually Amanda Cantrell. I am the wife of Derek Cantrell. I live at one nineteen Spears Lane in Gallatin. I am located in the Hunt Club subdivision. I'll try to make this as quick as I can. Many of my neighbors, along with myself, who live in the Hunt Club neighborhood located adjacent to this property are very concerned and upset about the revelation that such a commercial property could possibly be developed in this location. Currently, it is zoned agriculture agricultural, and the vast majority of the homeowners in Hunt Club were under the impression that said property may only be rezoned for future residential development. As the newest portion of Hunt Club was constructed less than a year ago, we did not expect that a possibly ninety thousand square foot ice rink along with restaurants, retail shops, hotels, or apartments would be in our backyard. As you can expect, this has caused quite the uproar among our neighbors who fear for the safety of our families as well as the future impact this development will have on our home values. Our greatest concerns with this development are as follows. The proposed location of the ice rink, the connection of our existing neighborhood road to the development, the safety of our children who freely play throughout our neighborhood, the impact an apartment complex and traffic will have on Jack Anderson Elementary that is located directly across the street, the traffic this will bring to a roadway that cannot handle it in its current state, the crime associated with a transient crowd drawn in by the hotel, noise associated with various aspects of this development, the loss of our wildlife that currently live comfortably in the field and woods behind our homes, the impact this will have on the environment and streams running through the property. Last, but certainly not least, the impact this will have on home values for those that live directly adjacent to this property. We have gathered as a community to raise our concerns, and I am just sharing some of those concerns with you. I don't think any of our neighbors are opposed to having this sort of development come to Sumner County. The location seems very inappropriate. There are so many other properties available better suited for commercial business. For example, there is a vast stretch along Saundersville Road in Hendersonville that would fit this development and not have nearly the negative impact that choosing this current location is sure surely to have. I would implore you to take into careful consideration the negative impact this development will have on its surrounding community if it is approved in its current state. We will simply not be satisfied with walls and landscape buffers separating our property to theirs.
Mr. Chairman, this is Derek Cantrell. I don't know if there's any time left. If there's not, then I can save my submission of my comment for a later date.
Well, Mr. Cantrell, that we we did go three minutes. Did you have something brief to add?
The only thing that I would add, we come from the Mount Juliet Providence area, coming from previous law enforcement. I'm no longer in that field. But just from the negative standpoint, from the crime rate, the reason that we moved out to Gallatin, born and raised here my whole entire life is the whole reason that we moved out here. I can tell you from sex trafficking, you know, car break-ins, home break-ins, the this development and that type of behavior that it would bring to our city and our community would just be intolerable at this point. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Cantrell.
Yes, sir.
Josh, who was the next person we had online?
Mark Costa.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Right across the street at one eighteen and Spears Lane in Hunt Club. In addition to what Mandy had had brought up, we're, there's more of the everybody's crushing the deer out. But bigger concern is Shoot Lane. As it is, it's pretty bad. It's pretty dangerous when a school bus makes the ninety going towards the school from back here. But you have all these egresses from the property, one cutting into Hunt Club, which is going to be a major issue, and I know that's Sumner. But when I look at all this, I say, why isn't a hockey rink up front on thirty-one? Because if this has to do with the Predators, then that should be front and center. If you put the entertainment district around it like most cities do, that would provide a lot of tax bases for the city of Gallatin and then relieve a lot of the problem for the neighboring areas because then you'll move the traffic away from the school, the boat ramp down south. And it'll be less dangerous with that stream that they're going to have to move. There are a lot of problems with this, and it seems like it's being sloughed by. And now's not the time to slough it by because it's already dangerous in here.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Josh, who who do we have next that would like to speak?
We have Martin Hoagland.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Hoagland.
We also have
Hoagland, we are at one oh two Eklund Street. We closed on December thirtieth. And we were very surprised to find out that two weeks later, the Scope Farm Development was announced. Our southeastern builders did not inform us of this planned development, nor do we believe that they were actually made aware of it. My wife and I are huge hockey fans. She's a diehard Blackhawks fan. I'm a hockey fan all the way back to Kentucky Therapies. We love hockey. We like ice skating. But we just don't want it in our backyard. There's concerns about noise, pollution, light pollution. Especially when you're talking about an outdoor concert venue, basically in our backyard. And. Strong possibility of alcohol being served and and the crime element. As well as impact on local schools which are already at capacity or over. And traffic concerns, especially if you're hooking on to our subdivision roads. And bringing a lot of traffic down. If you look at other ice centers like Antioch and Bellevue. They're typically in well-developed business areas with multiple access points from all all directions, whereas. If you look at the one that was proposed for Franklin, it was right adjacent to a residential home area. And was strongly opposed, and we believe that. That there are much better sites along thirty one in Gallatin. That would be a better place for this ice center. I believe that's about all we had, so thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Hoagland. Josh, do we have anyone else who would like to speak?
We do. We have John Moore, followed by Carolyn Walker. And lastly, Del Ghia. And then Natalia and Douglas.
Alright, Mr. Moore.
Hi, thank you. Sure, can you hear me okay?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I thank you for for letting me speak. I guess my first question is, why didn't you move something like this down to Greenlee Boulevard where you have the interstate and Gallatin Road? It's more into Gallatin and developed. Kind of like the previous comments have mentioned. If you had four years to work on. If you haven't traveled shoots lane, you ought to. Because you're talking about either taking out that stream or knocking out somebody's home to widen that road. And it's not very wide. It's two lanes and just go drive it. But the other kind of comments that were hit, I agree with, and I just wanted to second that, you know, and with the crime and all of that, but something else. There's a lot more than Hunt Club. There's River Chase, but there's also the communities that are back off the peninsula that have to come out shoots lane or cages bin. And where it's at at the top of the hill, you're going to have a lot of traffic coming in and out of Gallatin, and it seems like you would put something like this kind of more. Down towards where that's developed, instead of more of what we would kind of perceive as a residential area. And. You know, you'd have you'd have kind of less of the traffic concerns that are bound to pop up, and that's really the main thing. Is where it's at. I don't think really anybody, it's just a kind of an ice skating rink, and I don't think anybody's really opposed to that if you moved it. So again, it's where it's at, and I can't really over emphasize that. That's pretty much it. So other than it's just going to wreak havoc on traffic, affect our lives, you know? So thanks for letting me speak, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And next we have, I believe, Carolyn. I didn't catch the last name. I'm sorry.
Carolyn Walker. You've you're using an older version of Zoom. Okay, there you are. If you hit your spacebar, you should unmute yourself.
It's Waller, W A L L E R.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Go ahead.
It's Waller.
I'm sorry.
I think that's fine. I get it all the time. Thank you very much for allowing me to talk tonight. I'll be brief. I just kind of want to echo what Jamie had said earlier. And I can appreciate all the opposition to this program, especially for the rinks. My husband and I both play on multiple teams. We go and we play before facilities as well as a centennial. And and I can appreciate the woman who spoke prior to Mr. Cantrell. Their concerns about transient behavior for the hotels, et cetera. I can assure you that we spend about seven thousand dollars a year just in league fees alone. So the the people that are going to be coming to this community to spend money on hockey tournaments. That will be potential revenue that will be drawn to this community. And that will include local businesses, especially the hotels, the shops, the restaurants, et cetera. These are people that will be coming in from out of town. So I can assure you, it's not necessarily going to be transient behavior that comes to use the hockey facility. So I just want to make sure that people were aware of that. So we appreciate you guys considering, you know, this development to augment the the restaurants. And the the family oriented facilities that will go within the city limits of Gallatin. But also to consider the 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 Sumner County side with the rinks especially, because that is something that our high school. You know, we've got three high schools up here that, you know, that those parents have to take their kids all the way to Antioch. And to Bellevue just to let their kids practice three and four times a week, as Jamie had said earlier. So we implore you to at least consider, you know, for for the youth of our community. You know, for for these rinks to happen along with the development where it's at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Waller. And next we have. I wrote down Dell Dell Nia. Did I get the name right?
We have Natalia and Douglas, followed by Del Ghia, G H I A. So Natalia and Douglas, your line has been unmuted.
Hello. So there are many concerns that we have with this development. It is directly adjacent to a residential area. And there will be many people coming into the area from Nashville and all over. So as is obviously, as has already been mentioned, safety is a large concern. A hotel is being built with people. Coming in and out of town, and there's an elementary school down the street. And the children playing in this area. With thousands of people from the outside coming into our community. There will inevitably be more crime and unwanted activity. The outdoor concert stage will bring noise, parking overflow, and all of the buildings will cause light pollution. I don't want my kids driving down shoot lane after everyone's leaving the concert after a night of partying. We also don't want cars parking along the street in our neighborhood. As there will inevitably be parking overflow. As you know, because they're going to connect the neighborhood to the development. I mean, ice rink sounds nice, like everyone said, just not in our backyard. This place will not belong to the people who reside here and the taxpayers. But instead to the people from Nashville and out of town. Please think about the residents of the Hunt Club when you're voting tonight. Thank you.
And Douglas, your last name?
It's Whitcomb.
Thank you. And we have. Del Ghia, G H I A.
Yes, is is Dell's line unmuted?
Yes, your line's been unmuted.
Go ahead, Dell.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, this is Dell. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, your line's been unmuted.
Alright, and you can hear me now? Alright, I live at one thirteen. I live at one thirteen Spears Lane. And.
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. I live at one thirteen Spears Lane. And my. My property butts up against. The development. I am a former hockey dad. Both my boys played hockey from age four up in up north in the Little Caesars League. Played through high school. And my oldest one played in college, so I understand the love of hockey, but. Not in this location. To me, this is inconsistent with the area. This whole development surrounded by subdivisions, by homes. I don't see how this is consistent with the county or city plan. I'm all for hockey, but not here. When we bought this lot, we moved here in April. Southeastern never mentioned this. It was, we looked at the zoning. We loved, we even paid a premium for the lot because it butted against this agricultural area. And now I'm going to have a hockey rink directly in my backyard. So again, I hope you consider the residents of not just Hunt Club, but all the surrounding subdivisions. That this area is just inconsistent with the current development. Thank you.
Thank you, Dell. I do want to remind everybody out there. Want to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak, but I want to remind everybody that. The item that's before us with Gallatin Planning Commission is not the hockey, the ice rink. We're not dealing with that. We're addressing the. Retail and the parcels north along Gallatin Road. I recognize it's coupled with the ice rink, but. We can't address any of your concerns regarding the the layout of the ice rink. But I still want everyone to have an opportunity to be heard. And get their comments on the record. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, Josh?
Mr. Chairman, I can do a brief summary of the twenty emails that I have in front of me. I will give name, and if there's any information. We have Jason Givens, who sent an email to support. Kelly Wombold, W O M B O L D, support. Matthew Grossland, G R O S L A N D. Who wrote a an email, a very well worded email of support. Selena Sullivan, support. Jen Gertan, G I R T E N. She wrote a very well worded email of support. Jill Wilson. W I L S O N. As a Gallatin resident, she supports. Jody Kennedy. Also wrote a very well worded email. And supports the project. We have Renee. A G U I A R E, who lives in the Saint Blais subdivision, wrote a letter of support. Jared Sharp, as a resident of Sumner County, wrote a an email of support. Suzanne P H I L P O T, wrote an email of support. We have Colleen Crellie, C R I L L E Y. The goat farm needs to remove access from Vaughn Road, but otherwise supports the plan. We have Annette Hollis, H O L L I S, who wrote a an email of support. Logan Givens, a seventeen year old, wrote a letter of support. Suzanne Philpot, again, wrote a an email of support. Scott Walker, wrote an email of support of the project. We received a voicemail from Anna Giles, who supports the project, but without the apartments. Dan Hollis, H O L L I S, wrote a an email of support. Nate Renzella, R E N Z E L L A, wrote a very well worded email of support. Doug Pinkerton wrote a an email of support. And we, the one of the last ones is from Zoe Doyle. Would like to see the development, but has a few concerns about its impact to residential neighbors. Removal of the Vaughn Street connector, additional buffer screening to reduce sound and light. Widening shoot lane past Jack Anderson Elementary and adding some pedestrian walkways. To make development more accessible to the Hunt Club and River Chase from a pedestrian standpoint. We also just recently received several more emails from. I have. Just the initials M C. M C does not support the goat. The goat farm. That's. And then an email, why isn't the chair making everyone give their address? That was not completely related to the goat farm, but that is good information. Thank you. RDB Weekly File. And Mr. Chairman. Let me see if I can get this audio playing again. Let me go ahead and turn it up. And this would be related to the voicemail that we received earlier today. Not directly related to the goat farm, but again, the city attorney's office is telling me we have to include it, so here we go.
Mr. King, my name's Kirk Peterson, eight one seven Douglas Bend Road. Can I make the meeting tonight? I would like to go on record that I oppose all, all apartment. Buildings, additional apartments.
Chairman, I just wanted to mention, I just got a call from Mr. Wilson, who said his internet has cut off and he can't get through on the phone or back. Via the computer.
Okay, well, we.
Put up all kinds of different buildings around us. And increase the traffic, increase the noise, and increase the congestion.
Josh, we can't hear that recording?
Okay, the caller had concerns about development in the city of Gallatin. Related to apartments and development in general, and is not supportive of anything happening. Any development happening in the city of Gallatin. As a brief summary, he also named specific properties not on the agenda tonight. Nor are they being considered for development at this time, but we will. That email has gone out to all the members of the Planning Commission, and Mary Ann, we can work on getting that officially added to the minutes.
Did he state his address? I couldn't hear.
He did, I believe it was eight seventeen Douglas Bend.
Okay.
And I would like to add real quick, we had three letters that were in your packet that we did receive early. One was from Jody Kennedy. Purchased a home off of Compton Street in the Hunt Club community, and she had concerns about. The entertainment district and the connections to Vaughn and traffic, so a lot of the concerns that other people have voiced tonight. And then her husband Walter Kennedy. Also had concerns about the noise and connections onto Vaughn Street, but those two were in your packets. And then Amy Tesson had concerns. And they were mostly about the the train tracks and the plane or the plan around. Connecting or raising or lowering the train tracks due to traffic concerns in that area.
I apologize. I didn't know that Josh was trying to let us hear something because that's when I was speaking about Mr. Wilson, because I couldn't hear that.
It worked earlier today in a Zoom meeting, but I think in this webinar format, it does not work in the same way. So my apologies for that. Technology has failed me today.
James Ben.
Josh, do we have any other? People who would like to speak under public comment?
We have. Three hands that have just gone up. The first is Chris Mills, followed closely by Michelle. Chris Mills, your line's been unmuted.
This is Chris and Rebecca Mills at fifteen fifty three Hunt Club Boulevard. So we are on the record as being opposed to rezoning this and having this commercial development in the city of Gallatin. We agree that it's inconsistent with the character of this area, which is residential. And the, we understand that what's being considered is in the city of Gallatin. And not the ice rink per se, but this is all part of the master plan, and we doubt very strongly that. The restaurant, hotel, apartments, and all these other elements, the outdoor concert venue, and all of this would be considered for that parcel. If not for the plans of what's going behind it. And, you know, it's very unfortunate that this has been four years of people's time. Planning to put this in there without. Ever apparently considering the residents, the people who live here, whose lives will be impacted every single day by this. I understand people want to have this venue for their families, for the ice rink, and that. The ice rink is dependent on what you're considering tonight. But there are so many other places that this whole project be considered. So if you go forward with what you're considering tonight, then you are giving tacit approval to the rest of the project that's going to go before Sumner County. And whether that, and if that part doesn't go through. Then you have this apartments we don't need overcrowding our schools. You have outdoor music venue. Who's going to come play there? It it's just, it's not well thought out and. And again, it's really unfortunate that all this time and money has been put into this without apparently looking around and considering what's already there, when there are so many other areas, Greenley Boulevard, US thirty-one, in Galton, in Sumner County, that would be such a better place for this with the same access in terms of highways. So we, we are opposed to this for all the reasons that have already been stated. We love the idea of having this, you know, this project, more restaurants, hotels, whatever, but not smack in the middle of neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, who is, you said we have another caller?
Michelle, your line's been unmuted.
Thank you, Josh. Michelle Juvance, thirteen thirty-five Long Hollow Pike. I actually was just going to say something similar than Ms. Mills just said about how the whole project is connected to itself. It's, it's in Galton, it's in the county. It's next to Hendersonville, and you can't separate it out. You have to really look at it as a whole. And I think a lot of the emails that were being read that were for the, they were in, for the, you know, an email in support of, but I think a lot of people are excited about the ice rink that don't live next to it. And they are maybe, maybe those emails were in support of the ice rink, but were they in support of the apartments? I, I don't think that, that was actually made clear, like what these people that were writing emails in support of. So there's a lot of complicated elements in this development, so. Yeah, it's, it's hard to just say we're just going to make a decision on parting Galton, but it affects so many other entities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Chairman, I have to retract an earlier statement that I made. I had Jody Kennedy's email as support. Gillian has pointed out to me that she did not, she expressed concerns over the development, and that email was shared with the Planning Commission. So I retract my statement and Gillian's statement about the email that you've received should stand for the minutes.
All right. Thank you. Do we have anybody else who wishes to speak?
So this is the last call for public comment on the goat farm. If you have not emailed or provided comments ahead of time, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen, or hit star nine on your telephone if you're joining us from your phone. We have Jessica, your line has been unmuted, followed by Lindsay. Lindsay, you went away. If you do want to speak, please raise your hand. But Jessica, your line's been unmuted.
Thank you. I just want to say that we do live less than a mile from the proposed development. We're actually off of Shoreside Drive. And while I do know that there are many concerns about the traffic that it may create, we are in full support of this development. So just, I know you've got many that do support it that don't live as close as we do. I know you've got several from Hunt Club that are, have many concerns. I do understand their concerns. However, we do support it, and we live less than a mile from the development.
Can I get your last name, please?
Givens, G I V E N S.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. At this time, no one else has raised their hand that is not representing this item. Before you close it, we have Abhay S H E T T Y. Your line's been unmuted.
Hi, just wanted to echo what Mrs. Mills said, that we, we like the idea of this development, but we don't approve of this location being so close to a residential neighborhood. That's all we had to say.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure that we get the spelling of your name correct. A B H A Y S H E T T Y.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
We are residents of the Hunt Club neighborhood, and we pretty much voice the same concerns that everybody else has. Just wanted to go on the record to say it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Josh, do we have anybody else who would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, no one else has raised their hand that is not representing the item that has indicated they want to speak on this item.
At this time, I will close the public comment and open the floor to entertain a motion so that we can get discussion on the floor.
I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Motion by Mr. Harris. Do I hear a second? Do we hear a second so that we can engage in discussion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hibler. Discussion on the item?
You know, I, I hear the concerns of, of the residents in the area, especially, you know, in the Hunt Club, all, you know. Of course, that's, that's not our part to debate the, you know, the frontage on Nashville Pike, the retail, the hotel. You know, it, to me, makes a lot of sense for it to be there as a great entranceway to the city. So I, I don't, I, I don't have a lot of the negatives there. The, I think the biggest concern of this for, for many is going to be the multifamily element up in the front. You know, and I, I don't see these, you know, being multifamily apartments that are the same caliber as much as what gets built in the city elsewhere. I, you know, from what I've seen on this, is going to be a higher end unit that probably has less of an impact on the schools. So I don't, you know, to think that apartments are just going to stop being economically viable is not, you know. I don't, I don't think that's real. I think the, if, if the developers can't fill them, and there's not people that need that type of housing, then the economics would, would prevent them from putting them in. It's my opinion.
I, it was my understanding that it had not been decided if there would be apartments versus condominiums at this time. Is that not correct?
I, I, I think you are correct, and I think there's, yeah, the zoning they're requesting, I think, would allow, you know, give them some flexibility, but I don't know that they've decided absolutely what it is.
I would, I would hope that they would just go ahead and make those purchased condominiums, but I, instead of apartments, because we have so many apartments, as I said earlier. But I believe he said tonight that it had not, that they were still discussing that. I have.
Go ahead, Ms. Love.
Is the, is all of Chute's Lane in Galton, or is that only us, or is any of it Galton? Does anybody know?
Nine hundred feet.
It's in Galton.
Chute's Lane is Galton.
The, the east side is nine hundred feet off Galton Road.
Yes, Chute's Lane at, near the intersection of Highway thirty-one is in Galton, but the remainder is not. So you can see where it takes a jog there, where it was realigned to intersect with Highway thirty-one because of the construction of Highway three eighty-six. Where it makes that jog is where it enters into the city of Galton. So it's roughly from the driveway, the north driveway of the complex, north up to Highway thirty-one that's in the city, the rest of it's not.
So if it was the part that might at some part need to be widened is in the county instead of the city?
It would be in the city, and that would be based on a traffic study that would be submitted with an FMDP. They'd make a determination as to whether or not improvements would be needed at that intersection.
Oh, I don't mean at the intersection. I just mean if Chute's Lane, if it was, if it was necessary, it looks like the part that would be was more in the county.
Yeah, it's not in the city of Galton, that portion.
And Vaughn Road is not in Galton.
Nope, that's in Hendersonville.
Yeah, thank you.
So I tried to write down a lot of the comments that I heard during the public comment, and I know that after I reiterated that we're only addressing the northern portion of this project, the portion that's in Galton. I know that some people stated, well, you can't look at it as a separate parcel, that, that the hockey rink won't come without that northern, or that northern portion that's in Galton won't develop without the hockey rink and vice versa. I think that's only half true. I think maybe the hockey rink won't come without what's north on Galton, but that northern section that we're addressing is going to develop one way or the other. It's prime land, and, and it's, it's going to develop as retail. As far as apartments are concerned, I'm not wild about more apartments either. But if you'll look adjacent, these apartments that are put in here, or perhaps they'll be owned units, condos, they nestle right against the Hunt Club apartments, the section of Hunt Club apartments that's already there. So it's not as if we're sticking apartments out in the middle of complete residential that doesn't have any other apartments there. It's immediately next to other apartments, and almost looks like an extension of that project. I'm only looking at the northern portion of this, and that's the part that's in Galton. So yes, I'd be in favor of what I see on the plans there. Other discussion?
I will say that I've had a huge amount of emails, and the huge majority is in favor of this. The only complaints I've received really were, were about apartments.
Any other, we have a motion on the floor, a second. Mr. Harris, did you have something to say?
Nothing, nothing, nothing new to add, just reiterating what Councilwoman Love said. The, the vast majority of the feedback I've received via email has been positive.
I think it's important to look, look at the dotted line. You know, John has said that, Bill has said that, Matt has said it. The dotted line is the northern portion, which is in Galton, so. We don't have jurisdiction over the rest of it.
We do not. If there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. We have a motion on the floor in favor of approval with a second. Saying none, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, if you'll take a roll call vote, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson.
You're muted, Mr. Wilson.
Councilwoman Love.
You got, can I hear you now?
Yep.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Ogain.
Yes.
Mr. Strather.
Yes.
Ms. Hibler.
Yes.
Misses seven zero.
We will move to item number twenty, which is resolution number two zero two one dash zero zero eight, Tennessee Grasslands amended preliminary master development plan. Please presenting this item.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Josh King with the Planning Department. The owner and applicant request approval of it, of an amended PMDP, FMDP for Tennessee Grasslands, consisting of an event center, additions to two existing clubhouses, expansion of the golf training facility, four tennis courts with a tension fabric structure covering on portions of two parcels located both at nine eighty-one Plantation Boulevard and fourteen fifty-five Foxland Boulevard. The, what's displayed on your screen is the proposed clubhouse addition for the existing clubhouse located on Plantation Boulevard. Next slide, please, Gillian. This is the other property located on Brown's Lane, where the tennis court facility and golf academy is intended to go. This is right at the edge of the subdivision before it meets. I knew the subdivision just a moment ago, and it's slipping my mind. I think, I think it's Woodhaven.
Bay Point to the north.
Yes. Right there on the screen, Bay Point. Next slide, please, Gillian. Next slide. So the, the tennis courts and golf facility we're looking at are located here, almost at the edge of Brown, of Brown's Lane, just south of Woodlake. And then the other golf course and pool was along Plantation Boulevard, near the existing golf club and pool, golf clubhouse and pool. Next slide, please. This is some proposed renderings of what the expanded clubhouses will look like. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. All of these were included in your overall packet. All of the architecture proposed for this project. Next slide, please, Gillian. This is the tennis structure. These are the courts with the stretch fabric awning, or the, the tenant tension fabric structure covering. Next slide, please. This is the proposed landscape, a buffer yard around, specifically around this facility, along with supplementing some existing trees along the property here next to the Golf Course Academy expansion. So this was the, this is a slide that shows how these neighboring adjacent, one, two, three, four, five, six, six lots that would be most impacted or most visible to the tennis courts would be shielded from view of this structure. And I believe staff recommends approval of this item, and recommends that the Planning Commission consider this a minor amendment to the preliminary master development plan. And I believe the applicant is here.
Thank you. If we have a representative for the applicant, please state your name and proceed.
Josh, this is Brett Smith. Can you hear me?
Yes, Brett, go ahead.
This is Brett Smith with Reagan Smith Planter. I am at the Foxland Golf Facility, along with Tennessee Grassman staff, Reagan Smith staff. Online is Mike Mattis, the project architect, and Sam Christman, the project engineer. We agree with staff's well-written report. We agree with their conditions of approval. A clarification on the tension fabric structure, thirty, thirty-five feet near staff reports, probably closer to an average. It may be up to forty feet at the, at the peak. However, it'll still slope down to fifteen feet at the sides. We feel that the staff report and, and the images that Josh just went through are sufficient. We'd love to talk about it. It's exciting. But in the interest of time, Mr. Chairman, what we'll do is reserve our time for any questions or responding to any public comments that may come up.
Very well. Thank you, Brett. We will, the first thing we need to do is to take a vote on whether this is a major or a minor amendment. If it is, to remind everyone, if it's a major amendment, we'll need to send this on to council, and we will also need to hold a public comment at this time. If it's a minor amendment, be handled at Planning Commission.
Make a motion that's a minor amendment.
Motion that it's a minor amendment.
My second.
And we seconded that, seconded by Mr. Strather. Any discussion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote? All in favor of it being considered a minor amendment indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilwoman Love. Ms. Love.
Sorry, yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Strather.
Aye.
Ms. Hibler.
Yes.
Uh, passes seven zero.
All right. And then I'll also want to take the unusual step of stating that following procedure, if it's a minor amendment, a public comment is not necessary. However, it was posted on our agenda as public comment. And so if there's anyone here who wants to speak tonight, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and allow public comment if there's somebody online who would like to speak. Does anyone second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. I don't even, can we get a show of hands, all those in favor of suspending the rules? That'll do for that. All right. Josh, would you open that up if there is anybody? I will open the public comment if there's anybody who would like to speak.
If you're a member of the public and would like to provide input on this project, please raise your hand using the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen. Or hit star nine on your phone if you are joining us via phone. So again, at the bottom of your screen, there's the raise your hand. Please feel free to use that or hit star nine on your phone. And it will indicate to me that you'd like to speak on this item. Mr. Chairman, at this point, no one has indicated they'd like to speak on this item and we have received no. Vo, uh, we've received no voicemails or emails about this project.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public comment and I will entertain a motion regarding item twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Harris. Do we hold, do we hear a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Albert Stroller. Any discussion?
I think the only, the only comment I have from a discussion standpoint, my only concern with this during the work session was the parking and. Think the applicant and staff, you guys did a great job of demonstrating through the, through the staff report, how the, the parking times vary. So this is going to be a good looking project, guys.
I concur. I lost track. Did we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Yes, we're ready for a vote.
Okay. Getting tired. At that point, then I will call for the vote. All in favor of approval indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann, will you please take a roll call vote?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Strather.
Aye.
Ms. Hibler.
Aye.
This is seven zero.
Thank you. All right, we have two items left to go. Do y'all want a break? It is none. Or do you want to push the, get it done?
Let's do it. Let's go.
Okay. Matt, I'm. I need a break. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Matt, for item twenty-one, if you'll step in and share that.
Yep, absolutely. Item twenty-one is Tompkins Farm Phase One B Final Master Development Plan. Who from staff is handling this item?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This is Josh King again and or still. Uh, agenda items twenty-one and twenty-two are for Tompkins Farm Phase One Section B and Tompkins Farm Phase Two. Uh, I'm, I will introduce the items together, but they will require separate votes as they're both. Separate submittals for separate phases of a development plan. The owner and applicant request approval for Tompkins Farm Phase One Section B comprised of twenty-five single-family residential lots. On six point eight three acres, the F M D P is consistent with the P M D P that was approved on January twenty-second, twenty eighteen. And the revised P M D P F M D P for Tompkins Farm Phase One of July twenty-second, twenty nineteen. Item twenty-two is Tompkins Farm Phase Two, which is the, uh, I'm going to call it the northern loop of this project. The owner and applicant requests approval of Phase Two consisting of thirty-six single-family residential lots. On eight point nine six acres, east of Old Scottsville Pike and southwest of Airport Road. It is consistent with the approved mass, the approved preliminary master development plan of January twenty-second, twenty eighteen. And with the revised P M D P of July twenty-second, twenty nineteen. There was some early discussions about, uh, the re, uh, building a new bridge crossing over Town Creek of Old Scottsville Pike. The applicant has indicated that they're awaiting T dot approval, but this will be completed and these have been submitted. And will be completed with the phase one improvements. With that, staff recommends both approval of item number twenty-one and item number twenty to do with the conditions listed in the resolution.
Okay, thanks, Josh. Do we have a representative for the applicant online still?
Uh, yes, we do. Andy, hit star nine on your phone. There you go.
You got me?
Yep.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Andy, for hanging out with us all, all.
Well, honestly, honestly, guys, night like the night, you can almost get me to agree to anything. However, I have no disagreements.
Okay, so you're, you guys are in agreement with all the staff's comments?
Yes, we're in agreement.
Okay.
Well, here, it sounds like it's our opportunity to slap him with a few extra things that we always wanted.
You might be able to. I might just be like, I've already told Josh, I just walked out the door of the office. What I like about the Zoom meetings is, um, I just switched off my computer and got on my phone, so I'm fixing to be on the way home anyway.
It sounds, that sounds good. All right, I, I, I look to this item. I don't have any questions for staff, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approve.
All right, Mr. Wilson at second.
I'll second it.
All right, second, Mr. Strather. All right, any, any discussion on the item? I think we need to, we need to vote on these individually, I believe, so. Item twenty-one.
Yes.
All right, man, just, just to clarify, so, uh, there's no, no further discussion. Mary Ann, would you please take a roll call vote for item twenty-one, the Tompkins Farm Phase One Final Master Development Plan?
Vice Chair Perrier, I'm sorry, Chair Perrier. Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Strather. Ms. Hibler.
Yes.
This is six zero.
All right, thank you very much. And then moving on to item twenty-two, Tompkins Farm Phase Two Final Master Development Plan. We're discussed it, so entertain a motion.
I move for approve.
All right, motion second.
Second.
All right, second, Ms. Hibler. I don't see anything discussed on this one, so anybody have any comments or questions? All right, Ms. Mary Ann, if you would take a roll call vote, please.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Strather.
Aye.
Ms. Hibler. Uh, this is seven zero.
All right, thank you. And that is the last item on our regular agenda. And before I hand it back over to Mr. Perrier, I'm going to hope there's no announcements and no other business.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And I just wanted to say one thing. Linda, do you remember two weeks ago when I like swore you in and made you take a solemn oath you wouldn't quit?
I've thought of it often.
I'll entertain them. Is there any other business? Bill?
I'm going to Florida.
Have a great night, everybody. Thank you so much for hanging with us.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A long night.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Everybody be safe.
Good night.
Thank you, you too.